Like to welcome everybody to this New Bern Board of Auburn Workshop, September seventeenth, twenty nineteen. At this time, before we get going, if you would, join me in a prayer. Heavenly Father, we just ask that as we do those things that are in the best interest of our city, that we do those things with your protection and blessings. In your name we pray. Amen. Would you join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag of our country? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ma'am clerk, would you call the robe?
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderman Harris.
President.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Alon.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Dass.
Here.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Hey, everybody's here. At this time, I'm gonna turn this over to Alderman, Alderman, to City Manager Stevens.
Stepped up in the world there for a second.
Yeah.
So, tonight's work session that we have, we have three items on the agenda that the board wished to discuss. First will be an update on FEMA reimbursements. We then will discuss the Elevator study for City Hall, which all of you have received an email that had the attachment that showed what the actual study was. I've put a copy of the blown-up plan, so you can see it a little bit better in front of you. And then also, we'll discuss stormwater and drainage-related concerns here in the city and kind of give an update on that, so have staff prepare for all of those. So, we're gonna start with the update on the FEMA reimbursements and where we stand with all of that process. Mr. Savatelli, I'm gonna turn it over to him. He's prepared an update, and we also have our consultants from DRS here as well, to discuss any kind of things going forward and also to answer any kind of questions the board may have concerning the FEMA process and reimbursements that were still due. So, at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Savatelli.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Just a very brief update that we'll go through. Just for your information, costs incurred to date, we're almost twelve point six million dollars that the city has paid out in Florence-related costs. A lot of the costs include emergency services such as police and fire and those related costs that were during, that occurred, that were occurred during the storm, you know, taking care of employees, feeding them and whatnot, and supplies. In addition, we had contract labor for electric, water resources, and as well as debris removal. We have materials and supplies for utility restoration and emergency services, vessel removal, and the Jacksmith Creek wetlands burn repairs. Some, some costs that are still remaining to be incurred, we have repairs that need to be done to City Hall. Obviously, we have the Stanley, we also have Stanley White, drainage ditches, some docks need to be repaired, building content, so we have the four oh four and four oh seven grant buyouts. These are just a sample of some of the items that still need to be, where costs will still be incurred and will potentially be reimbursed by FEMA and through other grant programs.
Do you have an estimate on those additional costs? I mean, just a ballpark, an estimate?
Those costs could, those costs could range from a couple million dollars to multiple million dollars, unfortunately, given with Stanley White and the drainage ditches in there. Those are large, large ticket items. Some of the other items, you're probably talking somewhere in the neighborhood of half a million to a million dollars overall.
It'd be important for us to know that.
Maximum amount, you're probably looking at about twenty-four or twenty-five million dollars if we go after the ditches and get the full funded amount and things like that.
Does that include the twelve point six he just mentioned, or is that above the twelve point six?
That's above the twelve point six.
Above the twelve point six.
So, another twenty-four million above and beyond the twelve point six we've already laid out.
Best, potentially.
Thank you.
And associated with, with this, with hurricane force, we also had insurance for the damages. Well, I'll start with insurance proceeds. To date, we've received one point nine million dollars in proceeds from across our multiple policies. That include, that includes the NFIP policy, that includes our insurance through, for fire protective services and whatnot.
JR, what are we expecting to get from insurance proceeds?
We are, we're expected to get somewhere in the neighborhood of two and a half to three million dollars.
Okay.
Additional insurance claims, we have, we have about four hundred sixty-five thousand dollars of wind-related and other claims that we have already submitted to our insurance. As far as the deductible goes, the deduct, the deductible was already met with the flood insurance, so we won't have to worry, we should not have to worry about that going forward. Everything else should be, should be straight reimbursement from those folks.
JR, you're saying that an additional two point five million dollars outstanding for?
Total, I'm sorry.
Total.
Total.
Okay. So, you're looking somewhere around six hundred thousand dollars outstanding? Is that right, five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, sir, give or take. I mean, we have additional claims that are related to the fire training grounds, so that we've not received any funding for at the moment. We got, we have a potential claim for water resources. City Hall may actually end up being mainly in an insurance claim as opposed to a FEMA claim. So, these things are all, these things are all being sorted out with assistance for, with assistance for our DRS.
And why has it taken a year later that they haven't paid?
If I remember correctly, JR, wasn't there two hundred and fifty or two hundred and sixty thousand that was allocated initially for the, for the wind claim out of the four hundred and sixty-five that is up there now that may not be reflected here?
They, yeah, that, that's actually might be accurate.
My recollection was, is that the coding for that initial first payment was for wind and, but it, I may be mistaken.
That, that sounds accurate. Unfortunately, I don't know. It's off my head.
Okay. So, with, with that said, the, let's say that a little over, let's say the two hundred and fifty thousand has already been paid to date on the wind claim as an advance, which was initially done. You've received all of your flood insurance payments through the policy limits have, have been met on, on every policy. And in the answer to your question, the remaining wind claim information is that we're, we're working to provide, many of the, the claims, when the adjusters came out here to inspect it, where a lot of it was completed work. We're compiling all of the costs for that completed work, so it was not estimated by the insurance company. Most of that has been, has been done and submitted for them to, it's kind of like a running tab that's going on at, at the present time. And there are some outstanding issues. We're making a list of them, one of them being, the insurance estimate for City Hall was, was apparently probably fifty to sixty thousand light compared to the estimates that you had gotten to date for the cost to, to repair the facility here. City Hall is, is, is a FEMA claim only for the mitigation potential that, that the city had asked for. All of your damages at, at City Hall here are wind-related, and they are all covered by insurance without, without deductible application for that.
What is the deductible?
The deductible was, when you, when you have, when you have as, as much flood insurance damage as you had, and you had a one million dollar limit, for, for every dollar that you go over that one million dollar limit, your deductible works into, in reverse. So, you had a percentage deductible on all of your facilities that would normally be calculated up. Your, your flood insurance claim so far exceeded the limits that you had, that your deductible ended up being absorbed in its entire, entirety, and the insurance company has, has admitted to that and, and agreed that that's the way that they're gonna process their claim. So, there is, there was no deductible that was, that will be applied to the wind claim or the flood claim. Hundred percent payment. And, and to technically answer your question, the deductible under the, under the flood policy, it varied depending on the, the flood hazard area and some other criteria. In regards to the wind claim, it is a percentage deductible of the total insured values for each one of the buildings. So, if the City Hall is insured for, for a million dollars and you had a, I, I don't recall exactly what the deductible was, it's probably somewhere around the two to three percent range. It would be two to three percent of that under normal circumstances. However, in this case, it was absorbed.
So, all of it?
All of it. All of it, for every facility that was damaged. There will be no deductible applied to your loss.
So, that means everything like you just said was, will be paid a hundred percent?
That is correct, without any deductible. And the deductible being obviously the part that the city has to contribute to, to the damages. For, for all the, the wind insured and all the insured damages, the city will have to contribute zero.
Okay.
When I first, when I first came here and I said to them, this is how it's going to work, I, there was a lot of people that looked at me a little bit funny, saying, how is it possible to do that? And, and I said, wait and see. And, and that's how it materialized.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Cory.
Moving on to the, to the FEMA funding, just to provide some, a little bit of background information with the next couple of slides. FEMA sourcing is seventy-five percent of the monies that are being obligated by FEMA actually come from FEMA, come from the federal government. Twenty-five percent is actually coming from the state of North Carolina. We currently have twenty-eight projects, projects established. There are probably, there are going to be additional possible, depending on how some of these other things, additional things shake out with a couple of other smaller projects that we have that we've established. When I, when I'm talking about obligated funds, basically what I'm looking at is FEMA's has completed all of the review processes and they're, and they're awarding us those funds. And when I meant say that documentation has been submitted, I'm basically all I'm referring to is that the city has completed the requirements and provided them to FEMA. And information could be at various, various review levels for, with FEMA. It could be at the CRC, it could be with, it could be with our local FEMA representatives. And like I said, at some stage, they have documentation they need, they're just going through their review process. When I'm talking about the CRC, that's the FEMA's Community Recovery Center. They utilize that to process documents. Some of their documents are processed out of Atlanta, and there's a couple, several other locations that they, that they process documentation. If you hear me refer to a DM, DM is a determination memo. That's a memo provided by FEMA to determine eligibility of costs that are, that are in conflict between the city and FEMA representatives. So, we have, we do have a couple of DMs that we've received.
On that, on the DMs, is that something that if the board, if the city is getting held up from getting funding because of one item, is that something that it's better to take out and process everything and then go back and try to get funding for that at a later date? Because I knew there was, some cities have had problems with, they get hung up on a fifteen thousand dollar item, let's say, and it maybe it's better, you know, for the amount of money that needs to be reimbursed, that you just take that one out and come back and try to get later?
Coincidentally, that happens to be the city of New Bern.
I wasn't naming names, but I just.
Your four point five million dollar debris PW was held up for two and a half months waiting for a determination memo for fifteen thousand dollars. And, and to answer your question, that is absolutely the, the most common sense approach to do that. We, we pursued that and requested that of FEMA three to four times at many different meetings, and each and every time, they said no. And if I remember correctly, Bobby, did we not have a phone call with, with Doc from the state?
No, it was actually with, it wasn't with Doc, it was with someone else. I can't remember.
And, and did they not say, well, of course, you can do that?
Sure.
So, the, so the answer to your question is, is that yes, that is the most common sense approach to do it. That's the way it's always been done in the past. However, the people that we're dealing with refuse to do it.
It was Andy Ennis, and he actually said he had never heard of that.
Thank you.
And he called, he called me back and said, they won't accept it like this. They were right. And then he called back the next day and said, no, now they will do it. So, and I, so I don't know where they're at now, where they stand now. They've been all over the place.
As of Tuesday of last week, they still won't do it.
Yeah. Well.
Throughout the, throughout the FEMA system, there have been versions done to worksheets. As, you know, nothing is, is completed, you know, one hundred percent, or rarely is it one hundred percent at, at one time and turned in. Whenever you have to close out a project, they have to do a version to it. So, the, the version to it is either, is nothing more than to add funding to it or to take funding away from it. And, and what we proposed was, is that, look, you have this amount, why don't you fund it? And then we'll put the rest, you know, together and, and do it in a, in a separate package. And, and they have refused to do it. It's, it's not that, that, it's not that they can't do it, they just won't do it.
I mean, that's the way it's been handled for years prior to this storm too. I mean, Bertha and all Floyd and all of them, we, we basically handled it as an appeal. I don't know why I was holding them up.
I, I spoke with your former FEMA representative here, Bob Bass, who very much enjoyed working with the city, was here for quite a period of time. I explained the situation to him, he's out in Oregon, and he, he could not believe what I, I told him. He asked me if I was making it up, and I said, no. He said, I'm sitting here working on stuff right now that has multiple versions to it for funding. I, I have no idea where this is coming from. We, we have almost the exact same situation with another project where the determination memo was going to be written. And Sam, fill me in, the, the result of that, because I wasn't on the phone call in the beginning, do you remember the one where we were gonna put in the administrative costs and it was gonna be held up for that?
More.
Right. And what did they ultimately decide to do for that?
At least they all gave her their call out.
So, again, you had another two million dollar project to be submitted that was going to be held up over, over their, their, their feeling or opinion regarding administrative leave costs.
Yeah, I think it's probably time that we reach out for some help with these particular...
We have a plan we're gonna discuss once we get through all of this. Cory and I discussed today, and we'll brief the board and hopefully get the okay to the board move forward with it.
Let me, let me ask JR, if you would, go back a slide or two.
Yes, sir.
One more. Right there, it's seventy-five, twenty-five.
Yes, sir.
And I'll ask you and Cory, do you think it's worth our time to request a ninety, ten on these? We've done it in the past and succeeded.
A ninety, ten from FEMA, meaning changing the declaration from seventy-five to ninety?
No, well, actually, the state will pay us ninety percent and withhold ten percent.
It might be, it might be worthwhile. I don't know that they would do it on the ones we've already been obligated, but they might do it on a few.
Yeah, I'm sure they wouldn't do the ones already obligated.
Yeah. So, I think we, I think we probably make.
How many DMs do you actually have?
Two at this point.
Out of how many?
There's gonna be, there's gonna be more.
They're, they're all over the same issue, yet they are, are still, there's, instead of processing what they believe to be the eligible amount of the worksheet and taking, this is how it used to work. When FEMA saw a cost in there that they didn't like, that they didn't think was FEMA-eligible, they would take it out, they would make a note in the project, and they would move the project forward and fund the uncontested or the, or what they determined to be the eligible amount. That's been the way it's been done for years. I, I used to do it myself in final review. And, and now, under, under the new delivery model, instead of moving forward the, the eligible amount, they, they hold up the, the whole entire project until the determination memo is written. Then they, once that is done and transmitted to the city, they, they move the project forward for, for processing less the amount that they feel is, is not eligible. At the present time now, the, the determination memos are taking approximately four months to write. The one that you got in two and a half months was only, was only done in two and a half months because of, of kicking and screaming and hollering over the, over the absurdity level of holding up four and a half million dollars for fifteen thousand.
And they're all being rejected at the CRC level, correct?
This one, this one was, what, what it, what had happened is, is that your category B fire and police project was, was obligated by FEMA, and the money was transferred to the state. The state was in the process of working to, to send the money to, to the city of New Bern. And the debris PW got reviewed by a different set of reviewers at FEMA in the CRC, and they, they questioned the cost. They didn't, they didn't question the, they didn't question the validity of the administrative leave policy. They questioned how it was calculated. We provided them the explanation of how it was calculated, and, and they had determined that there was fifteen thousand in, in ineligible costs that they were gonna do the determination memo on. And we, we believed it always to be the method of calculation. When the determination memo came out, the, the reason was entirely different. It, it said because the word "may" is, is contained in the policy, that that means it's discretionary and it's, it's not FEMA-eligible. This was the first that we had ever heard of, of anything like this or, or questioning it. Had they asked at the time, we certainly could have provided more documentation as to why it's not discretionary. As a matter of fact, I'm probably about fifty or sixty percent completed with the, with the appeal for that, and I, I feel very comfortable with it, that going forward, the word "may" is in there only to make the policy grammatically correct. The, that's in section four, in section three of, of the policy. It clearly details that how, when an emergency is declared, that the city manager is, is required to do certain things. That's not discretionary. And I'll go into more details of it, but, but getting back to your, to your point, that was, that was simply what it was all about. And so therefore, now, every worksheet that goes in that has administrative costs included in it is gonna be held up for a determination memo. We asked them, look, can we just submit the regular costs and withhold the administrative costs while we are appealing this matter on, on this, on this other worksheet? And they said, no. And, and getting back to the point that I was making, with, with the category A worksheet, they, they determined that fifteen thousand was ineligible. They then went back and clawed back the, the one point two million dollar CAT B fire and police from the state, okay? And held up that funding while they did a determination memo for six hundred thousand dollars to remove the administrative cost that they had already approved and funded.
But is it based on the language there that, that was used?
Excuse me, sir.
It's based on the language?
What's that?
Is this based on the language? Seeing like, they're, they're basing this on the language?
They're, they're basing this on, on, on one word that is in the policy that says "may."
That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
Wow.
And, and when you are in a, in an emergency environment, and you, and you, and emergencies by nature, they're always a fluid system, okay? There has to be certain discretionary measures to do. When, when FEMA talks about a policy cannot be discretionary, under, under the regulations, it, it's very clear, okay? It can't be contingent upon federal assistance. You can't have an administrative leave policy that says, if you have a federally declared disaster, this is what we're gonna do, but for all other disasters, we're gonna do this. That is the part that is supposed to be non-discretionary. Your policy has none of those conditions in it whatsoever. But, and I won't go into more of the details, the, the, the appeal is, is quite, quite lengthy, but it's also quite detailed. So, we, we will continue to put that together to, to submit, to, to attempt to get the money back. The, the point being, one group from FEMA reviewed the administrative pay policy, found no problems with it, obligated the money. The next group that FEMA looked at and said, oh geez, we don't like that, okay? And, and then it didn't obligate it. And then, and then the other group came and said, oh, okay, well, we're, we're gonna claw back the one that we already approved. That's the short version, I'm sorry.
You had obligated projects, is where you were at before I sent you back?
I'm sorry. Yes, sir. All right, so, carry on a little bit here. We have three projects that have been obligated by FEMA to, to date. The obligated funds are about four point nine, five million dollars. The fund, the funds that we've received, of that four point nine, what we've received to date is four hundred and ten thousand. That's related to the police and fire cat, category B project that was submitted that Cory was just discussing a minute ago.
Okay, so where's the difference? Who's got the difference in the four point nine million and the four hundred and ten we received?
It's still at the state.
Why?
Because, well, we've submitted, we submitted for that, and they have not cut us the check for it yet.
Has it been obligated, right?
The funds were, the funds, the funds for the four point four million were obligated by, by FEMA on Tuesday of last week. We submitted the documentation, request the funding from them on Friday, so it takes a little bit of time to get the, to get the money processed to get us a check. So, we're still, we're just waiting for the state to get us money. There is another check for the dust removal that we are, look, I'm trying to hang up with this. The check was supposedly issued, so we're trying to figure out where, we think that's in the mail process.
I mean, I think it's reasonable if we submitted something on Friday and it's Tuesday. I mean, that's reasonable. But what I'm trying to accomplish hopefully by this conversation tonight is take all these political arguments from both sides out of this. State's blaming the Fed, the Fed's blaming the state. Let's figure out where the money is, let's find out what the delay is, and let us take our actions and do what we need to do to get our money.
Right, man. Absolutely. We've already talked about the, the DMs, a nauseam there. Submitted projects, projects that are with, that are with FEMA, that are, that are in their review. There's five projects that have been submitted, waiting, waiting final review from FEMA, FEMA or obligation by the C, by the CRC. As I said, these are in various levels of review at this point. That total is about three point two million dollars there. That would still be in the Fed's hands at this point. Upcoming additional submissions, we've, we've got some submissions that we're gonna be making within the next fifteen to thirty days. There's four, there's four projects that we're, that we're expecting. Total fund's about two point oh four million dollars. As a matter of fact, actually, that is slightly wrong now, because as I was speaking with, as I was speaking with Sam just a little bit ago, we actually have one more project that we're, that we should be able to submit within the next, within the next fifteen, thirty, thirty days, another thirty-eight thousand dollars. So, there'll be a, there's a fifth project in, in there, so that'd bring up the total up to about two point seven, two point eight million.
JR, what are the four projects?
Let's see, those four projects are category A cemetery, cemetery project, that's about fifty-seven thousand dollars. We have a, a category B mold remediation, that's about twenty-nine thousand. The Jacksmith Creek project, which is thirty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars, and the sanitary sewer project for repairs and maintenance and things like that that were, that were done to prevent some seacoals. And the staff over there, it's about one point nine million dollars.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, the, the one that I mentioned a minute ago that was submitted was a Rhodes project, about thirty-eight thousand.
You said Rhodes.
Yeah. When I thought you said Rhodes.
Rhodes. Rhodes. Sorry. We need to get you to speak Southern better.
So, it's a Yankee accent, I'm sorry.
Okay.
All right. All right. The, the next few slides, we're gonna get into some of the more higher-end, more public-facing projects that we have regarding the drainage ditches. Right now, of the twenty-eight projects that I mentioned earlier, three of those are related to the drainage ditches. It started off as one, then it's split it into two, and now it's three. So, the, these are the, kind of some of the things we've been dealing with. Costs are really unknown at this point, but we're expecting, but it's expected to be a multimillion dollar project. Of the eighty miles that we're looking at, FEMA did and spent a little more than a month, I think maybe close to six weeks, doing a sample of twenty percent. And those documents have been, that twenty percent has been fully documented. At this point, we, our Public Works Department is working on a, you know, project plan for it's in development, and we also, FEMA's looking at, into providing us some of the upfront, upfront engineering costs.
All right, I got a question about the ditches.
Yes, sir.
I, I don't understand, Cory, is my understanding that they have changed this now to a CAT A?
I'll, I'll give you the brief rendition of it, okay? When we notified them that you had, we had sent them in the ditches, and you had, you know, erosion and damages to the ditches, as well as tree debris from the wind where the trees had fallen into the ditches, okay? FEMA came up with their plan, this was their plan, and they said, we will come out with our site inspectors and randomly select and, and inspect twenty percent of the ditches, okay? They know that there were eighty miles, so they, they came out and inspected sixteen, seventeen, whatever it happened to be. They selected the spots that they wanted to, to see. This was a, a, at FEMA's request, this was a category D permanent work worksheet. They, we spent at least a month and a half, if not, inspecting these ditches, going and bringing them over by boat to every tree so they could measure the size of it and get the GPS coordinates of it. So, they finally got it all done, they, and, and inspected. You know, prior to us embarking on this, I twice asked them, are you sure that this is the way that is going to be acceptable for FEMA to do this? Look at the twenty percent, validate the twenty percent, and then extrapolate those damages out to the eighty percent and, and, and put the funding in. Their, their cost estimate for the twenty percent came out at about one point two million dollars. We, we believe that the cost is low, but it is a cost that was in there and would be trued up upon actual costs when the work is done. They extrapolated that out to the eighty miles and came up with around six or seven million dollars. They put the whole package together. The project was held up for, what, three or four months at their insistence that we get a letter from the Army Corps of Engineers stating that they had, they had no jurisdiction over the matter and that they weren't gonna provide any funding over it. the matter and that they weren't going to provide any funding over it. If you can imagine how hard it is to get a letter from a federal agency, well, that held it up for a while. So finally, all of the paperwork was done, it was submitted, it went to the central processing center of the CRC, it was there for seven days, and they sent it back to the local group here to be reprocessed, stating that it was not FEMA policy to inspect the twenty percent and extrapolate it out to the one hundred percent. And they told the city that you now have to identify one hundred percent of your damages, and then we will come back out and inspect twenty percent of it to validate the cost. They then turned around and changed the work from permanent work for the cleaning out of the ditches to emergency work. So they split the work from the cleaning out of the ditches, which would be the tree debris and the sediment, to emergency work, and they left the burn repairs that would be needed as permanent work. So they created two different categories of work where there was one before. And then, and again, told the city to, that it's the city's responsibility now to identify one hundred percent of the damages. Well, it took a month and a half or two months with a team of people from FEMA to identify twenty percent. And we just said, look, this is an unreasonable expectation. And not only that, we're one year past the disaster. How do you expect us to do this project and get it done in a timely fashion? There was no answer. And to make another point here, which is what we will discuss later on, okay? They re-categorized it as emergency work and asked the city to go out and identify all of the emergency work that needed to be done, and they would come out and validate it. That would be paramount to FEMA saying that we want you to pile up all your debris on the streets over there, okay? Submit to us one hundred percent of all the identified debris. We will come out and then validate it, and then you can pick it up. That is the point where you are at right now. They're asking you to validate, and so that they can come out and inspect projects that they have now classified as emergency work, which it doesn't work that way.
Corey, if they've changed this to a CATA, why can't we just hire a monitor and hire contractors and start work?
That is one of the options that we discussed today as one to move forward. If you would like to discuss that now.
Are you planning on talking about that?
That was kind of what I was referring to a few minutes ago.
Sorry.
And some steps to move forward with some of these major items. I mean, this is a, this is a project where if you have a monitor and you have a firm come in with a scope of work that they're supposed to perform, then, you know, you've got leaners, you've got hangers, you've got trees down, there's, to me, there's no difference if that's in public land or consider that a public waterway. If Army Corps is saying there's no jurisdiction, and DWQs has no jurisdiction, and at that point, it's kind of like in a roadway in a public land, would we have jurisdiction? I think in this particular case, if it affects the entire city and the drains waves and the flooding of the entire city, I would hope that they would agree with me. But ultimately, you're talking about sending a contractor that's going to do leaners, stumps, hangers, and trees down. And at that point, they're paid based on stuff that they accumulate, remove, and then obviously you've got the ditch dredging work that needs to be done, if you want to call it that, the two feet of sediment removal, that needs to be done as well. So, all of that stuff could be easily scoped out in a project, in a CATA type project, just like we do with any other debris removal contract that we have for that work.
Doesn't that contradict their own policy? Isn't there a time limit on CATA to be completed?
The CATA emergency work is supposed to be required to be completed within six months. If it's not completed within six months, then you have to file an extension, a request for FEMA for any work that's done after the six months. FEMA went in, and at their own initiative, okay, created an emergency work worksheet nearly one year after the disaster, and as soon as they created it, turned around and sent us a letter that said, please apply for an extension for the emergency work. And not only apply for an extension, please apply for the first six months' extension, which the state has to obligate, and then apply for another six months' extension, which FEMA has to, or something similar to that. And so, we said, so you're creating an emergency work worksheet one year into the disaster, and you now want us to apply for extensions to it? Getting back to another point here, we had, what Bobby had talked about initially, during one of our FEMA meetings, we had said to them, look, since you are changing this over to emergency work, why don't we do an emergency RFP for a contractor to do it and a monitor to do it, and get started on the project and do it as a normal emergency work would be done under the FEMA process. Like your debris, you have a monitor that comes in and validates that you're only picking up storm-related debris, and then the contractor follows the monitor and all the costs are trued up according to the monitor. We proposed that to them and asked them, and got no answer. This is the problem. The people that we are dealing with do not have the authority to make decisions.
So this is like, you would really say that they're just jerking you around?
That would probably be about the lightest thing that I have said about the process in the last year.
One of the other interesting things that has come out of this is they have potentially moved forward with, or are willing to move forward with, the twenty percent which they have already evaluated. The issue with moving forward with the twenty percent that they've already evaluated and validated that's out there in the field is those were random samples all over the city, which means that in order for us, if they came back and audited us to make sure that we complied with what the scope of the work was, we're sitting here doing a million dollars worth of work in random places without starting at the mouth of the river and working our way up the ditch line, which is the most effective way to do it. So what good is a million dollars of work going to be on a certain ditch line when downstream of that you still got trees and sediment and everything built up? It just does not make sense. It's not logical.
And in summary, in regards to the ditches, this is very simple. FEMA developed a plan to process this worksheet. We complied with each and every request that they did that took nearly a year for us to get everything together and for them to do the validation and to put all this work into the system. We validated what they did, I validated it personally, it went into the system, and then another department of FEMA rejected FEMA's own plan for processing this worksheet, and then turned around and dumped it back in the city's lap that says, here, you fix it. That's it in a nutshell. The proposal that I wanted to discuss with you here is one, is that, the first thing is, is that in talking with Mark, we want to try to get an appointment with somebody within FEMA, okay, that has the ability to make a decision to move this project forward and the Stanley White Center forward as well. Those are the two projects that are utmost that we wish to discuss, and I'll stick right now to the ditch project. You have a couple options. You can work to try to comply with FEMA's request now and inspect the one hundred percent, which is probably going to take six months. You're going to have to hire an engineering firm or someone else to, you know, to come out to do that, and put money upfront with no guarantee that FEMA's even going to turn around and approve this. So, that wasn't necessarily the best option. Since they had decided that this is now emergency work, what I had proposed to Mark today was, was that we first find somebody that has the ability to make a decision. And the second thing that we do is, is that we propose to them that they obligate the one and a half million dollars that they have already validated, and allow the city to use that money for startup costs to remove the sediment and the trees throughout the whole entire system. Plus, in addition to that, to appropriate startup money for engineering costs and monitoring costs that will be incurred in doing this project. So theoretically, we're proposing that they obligate about one point seven five million dollars to start this project off. Once we hope that they would agree to that, is that we were going to do an accelerated RFP for the work, for the monitor, and for an engineering firm to handle all the environmental and the permitting processes that are going to be involved to do this. As I said to Mark, this is not something that you want to handle in-house, you want a third party to handle all the environmental planning and how this project is going to be done. And then, with that done, the contracts get let, and you start the project, and as you go through the project, and you incur the costs, you document them, you validate them, you have the monitoring, you turn those costs in, in certain segments, okay, to FEMA to be reimbursed in versions on the worksheet. That is generally the proposal that I had set forth this morning to Mark. And I don't know if that made any sense because I kind of went through it pretty fast, but basically, it was similar to what Bobby said, starting the project now, getting it going forward under monitors, rather than holding this up indefinitely. And that was the proposal that we wanted someone from FEMA to agree to.
I think at this point, in addition to what he summarized very, very well there, is that we are looking to, at the direction of the board, reach out to our representatives that we, Mayor, you and I have contacts with, at Senator Burr's, Senator Tillis's office, as well as the White House, who we've had contact with, to set up a meeting with either the...
FCO? Federal Coordinating Officer.
Federal Coordinating Officer that has been assigned to this event, who basically is the ultimate authority, or the PA Assistance, Head of PA Assistance, which we met with in DC when we went over to FEMA with Wilmington and Surf City and some of the others. So, one of those two, if not both, whether that's in DC, whether that's in Raleigh, whether that's in Atlanta, I really don't care at this point. What we need is somebody who has authority to make a decision and has the know-how to read their own regulations and actually give us some direction so that we can get some finality to these projects, because we don't feel that we're getting that as we do now. And, so at that point, that's kind of where I'm at. I'm interested in seeing where the board's position is on that, as far as...
I think more so, it's like in the case of Mayor Saffo down in Wilmington, I talked to him last week, if we could identify several sister cities are having similar issues like this, maybe we could get four or five other cities together to go up there at the same time, because I thought it was much more effective when Wilmington and Surf City were with us that day. So, I mean, I'm ready to do that if that's what we want to do. It kind of looks to me like that, for FEMA to, for us to get them where we want them to be, a little more expeditious, that we're going to have to take an extension and do an absolute, and that is do work and hope for the best on the reimbursement, because it seems like the conjecture stage of this is not working. And that if we do it and document it, and we just have to get reimbursement, is, am I missing something here?
You're not with, you're not missing anything, with one exception that I will add on to. Part of the plan was, was to ask FEMA to obligate the one point two million dollars of the twenty percent that they had already inspected. If they were to agree to do that, and they did that, then that would mean that they are in essence agreeing that your city's maintenance plan for the ditches was acceptable, and that you have, you know, passed that FEMA level of test, that it's not the obligation or responsibility of another federal agency to do it, that it's storm-related damages as their own inspectors documented it. That would be one step forward versus going out and doing it and incurring millions of dollars of costs for them to turn around and arbitrarily say, well, we don't like your maintenance plan, we don't think that you demonstrated that this was storm-related. You have to understand that the FEMA site inspectors came out here, and ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent of the ditches that they looked at, which are of varying width, they themselves determined that there was two feet of sediment and debris in each one of these ditches. So there was sediment, was reported at the two-foot level for the width of the ditch, and every one of the debris, which happened to be trees, was also recorded. With the, the other three percent was, is that they determined that there was one and a half feet in those ditches. So, it's safe to say that the majority of FEMA, the site inspectors, okay, determined that there was two feet of storm sediment debris in the ditches that they inspected.
I mean, all this is for future resiliency, and to make sure that areas that shouldn't be flooded and that have flooded, don't flood. And, again, I think the whole thing started down in Robinson County, it started with the Soil and Water Conservation Division, whatever department that is, and obviously they partnered with Army Corps and others, and they're down there dredging the Laverne River. And I mean, that's tip, we have some major Blue Line streams and the Jack Smith creeks and those things that, if we can get those under control, we can get several areas of New Bern that should not be flooded to quit flooding, and that in itself would save a lot of FEMA buyouts in future.
Well, and there has been a lot of discussion recently about the fact that, you know, it has taken FEMA one year to put their plan together here, and now here we are in the middle of hurricane season again, and when the storm was coming up the coast, I was speaking with JR saying, well, I hope you don't get an awful lot of rain, your ditches are still full, and, you know, there'll be hell to pay for that when the city floods again, because the fingers will be pointing in every different direction. The plan that I proposed, you may, you most likely will have to put some money upfront to start the project. You hopefully will have some startup money from FEMA, but, you know, it's going to take FEMA a while to, you know, to process the payments that you make and return you, so I'm anticipating that you could have, you know, a couple million floating at any given point in time. And I picked a figure out of the air on that, because we don't know exactly what the costs are going to be because of many things, including access issues.
So you're saying that that's what you are estimating, that we're going to have to come up with about two million dollars to get this expedited moving forward? And how long, is that a number you're talking about?
I mentioned that number because there has been varying estimates as to how much it will cost to do this work. FEMA had estimated at six million, but, and I won't go into details about how they calculated, but it was extremely simple. They included, they included no costs for engineering and permitting. They included no cost for cost escalation or anything to that effect. It was, it was pretty pathetic, the way that it was calculated. However, we weren't concerned about the dollar value that they calculated, because this will all be trued up based upon the actual costs that you incur. So they estimated at seven million, if it costs you twelve million, then those would be the reimbursable costs, as long as you're stuck to the scope of work that they did, which is what was planned and anticipated. Now, there have been other costs that I have seen potentially in and above the twelve million dollar range for this particular project. And again, that does not, that does not detail some of the things that were required. We had a meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers and was discussing the access issue and what was permitted and what was not permitted. And so, we believe that the ultimate cost will probably go above the twelve million dollar figure, if not upwards to. Mark, you pick a figure. Do you have any thoughts on it?
Yeah, I think you're probably, like Corey said, it could be anywhere from twelve to twenty million dollars, as far as when you're talking about eighty miles of ditch work. Just with the sampling that was done, I'm not exactly sure where all of those locations were, but if they're further upstream and the channels are a lot smaller, that sampling was probably a lot less. And so you may be dealing with a lot of stuff in those other areas. It could be potentially a large project, very large project. But it's crucial to, it's crucial to our city, and I think we ought to fight for it.
Do our costs, does FEMA want us to include hydroseeding and things like that to make sure that the silt is not right back down in the ditch when you're doing all this work?
You are going to have to comply with...
Is that part of the soft costs, engineering costs?
...of rules. In the, in the meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers, they were under section 303, I think it was, or 403 of the Clean Water Act, there is a provision in there for maintenance that does not require a permit, it just requires a notification to the Army Corps that you're going to do it. This could be classified as a maintenance project, and so therefore the permitting would be limited. However, when you get into the access issues and the disturbing of the banks for when you're dealing this up, yes, you are going to have to restabilize them and put them back so that you don't have, the Army Corps was very clear, you can't put anything back into the thing, and you have to make sure that it doesn't go back in. In other words, you can't pile it up on the bank and let it run back in again, you have to haul it away. You can't deposit it in a wetland, which means that you have to be able to get a truck in there to be able to haul it out, plus a machine to be able to do it with.
Which is another reason why we don't want to use our staff, and we do not want to do the permitting and the environmental requirements on our part. to do the permitting and the environmental requirements on our part. We want that to be by a professional engineer, along with a monitoring company, to ensure that it's in full compliance with all, both the Army Corps stuff, as well as the FEMA regulations, based on what the bid goes out to be.
Cory, who's the FOC now?
Her name is, her name is Libby Turner.
Well, she's the assistant, isn't she?
I do not believe so.
Okay, she is the FCA?
I know that she is an FCL from Region 4, I have met her when I was down there, and I believe that she still is.
Tom, Senator Tillis is prepared to have the meeting in New Bern with her.
Okay.
Her assistant's Robert, right? Isn't that his, her assistant in his town?
Robert Ferguson is the person that is appointed, that is the head of Public Assistance for this disaster in Raleigh. He is, he is the designated, I guess, top person for public assistance. Your federal coordinating officer is the person that the President appoints under the Stafford Act to direct federal assistance for this particular disaster, and that was the one that was appointed, that's what her job is. Her subordinates are Robert Ferguson, who is the head of PA. She handles individual assistance, public assistance, response, all the duties of FEMA are her responsibility when she is appointed.
Okay. I mean, you guys, I'm game to do anything, I just think that we need to move and do something. And if Senator Tillis is, is able to have Libby come down and have some of the state people with her, and if we can get it done quickly...
We're happy to help facilitate that meeting, and that's pretty much what our request was, is from the board, was the, you know, the authority to kind of move forward. I always like to ask the board if I'm going to be reaching out to...
Well, certainly, if you need...
You know, federal officials and...
I certainly, what would just need a direction?
Certainly.
I mean, I'm certainly in favor of you reaching out and scheduling a meeting with the FCO, as well as, and I think it's important that Dot be at this meeting as well, because she's the one that's managing the state side of it.
And I will say that, you know, I copied all of y'all on the letter that was sent, JR and I both sent out, and reached out to a couple of those officials up there at federal level, and they did inquire about it. And what was very interesting is, in the letter, which was considered to be an external affairs release by the, what they felt was from the local state FEMA reps approved by Big FEMA in DC, as an external affairs, I guess, answers to questions and some of the issues that we're having, they acknowledged their, I guess...
Their error in, in...
The ways they interpreted, interpreted their own rules, and have basically held this whole thing up.
Yeah.
And told us wrong, so, I mean...
The response was filled with approximately, for I'd say, 80% of the things that held up your projects here, that we would call, you know, the ridiculous things about, what is the GPS numbers for each and every telephone hole that your utility company replaced? And what is the location of the hole, and did you use a new hole? That held up that project forever, because the utility department had to go and find exactly where every pole was. Their response that came back from FEMA is, is that, "Well, we're sorry that we made you do that, you actually have the authority to, as long as it's within the right of way to do that, and you don't have to comply, as long as the original hole is in two feet of the other hole." So, the entire thing was, "Jeez, we're sorry about this, and we're sorry about that, and FEMA didn't, didn't give proper direction the first time around, but we've corrected it now." And it was, it was a litany of that.
They wouldn't pay anyway, but it's too bad we can't charge them for that extra work that they incurred on our staff.
Well, is it DAC? Can we charge them the DAC for it?
This is, this is why applicants, okay, are giving up. They can no longer afford to comply with the requirements to get the money, and on their own, they don't know how to do it, they don't know how to do it either, nor do they have the city staff to do it. You know, when you get to disasters of magnitude and level for the city of New Bern, you don't necessarily have the option to walk away. And so, you know, you're kind of stuck going through it. We think that in the long run, it will all turn out pretty good, it's just a grueling process that should have never had to happen.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, and I know you've still got some more presentation to do, JR, but on this, because of the discussion that we're having now, I certainly would recommend that we authorize the city manager to set up a meeting with the, with Libby or the FCO, and have Senator Tillis or his aide here during that meeting as well, which seems to be the only way that they are moving, is that there is a, is some type of congressional inquiry. Are you familiar with that coastal resiliency meeting in DC, in Washington, on Monday? I don't know if any of those folks are going to be there. I'm going to be there this Monday at 3:30, it's only going to be an hour, and I don't know if any of those, do you know, Mark?
I don't know who's going to be attending, sir.
Yeah, I'm getting what you just said. And I don't know if you want a motion, but do you want... You want a motion? Do we need a motion, or do you want just directions?
Hands up, direction, or whatever it is. I don't, I'm not seeing any of those.
That's right.
I would say, I would say we should include both senators' offices. We got more conversation, I mean, we met with Senator Burr, Senator Tillis was tied up. Senator Tillis is going for reelection next year, Senator Burr's not. Again, hate to bring politics into it, but that will. I'm interested in having a conversation, getting something accomplished, not a campaign event for anybody.
Right.
So, you know, we've got a new congressman that got sworn in last night, officially tonight, I guess, but, you know, I think anybody that can help us, we need them there, because we need to be able to paint this picture. I mean, fortunately for city of New Bern, we had, what'd you say, JR, $12 million in the bank to be able to afford this? But we have to operate our city, I mean, we've got other things we have to move on, and we've got some we're going to talk about tonight. We can't sit here and wait on this process. And we went to DC, you went to DC, we've had people come here, the President came here, I don't know what more we need to do, but I think it's time for us to get serious about it, and if we need to involve people from the state that needs to be here as well, because we had some meetings with them as well. But I don't think anybody really understands the importance of what this is, because we've taken care of things at the local level, and the citizens are saying, "Wow, you guys did a great job, you took care of everything." Guess what? Our bank account's empty now. Not technically, but it's $12 million lighter than it was. So, it's time for us to do something, and I agree, I think a meeting here would be great, and make sure you guys are here, because you're obviously experts that know all about this stuff, so yeah, I fully support it.
Got it.
And in reference to your comment about the state, I want to assure you that this project and the Stanley White Center has been discussed exhaustively with the state, and there has been no objection to each and everything in issue that we pointed out, or disagreement.
Well, it definitely sounds like the problems at the federal level, based on what you're telling me, so.
JR, you want to, I think we've beaten the ditches up, so you can probably go ahead, and we've kind of got the direction on that.
Yeah, the only other thing I want to, I want to make a comment on is that last bullet point, is that the public work staff has reached out to the Army Corps of Engineers and DQ to make sure that we are following all proper guidelines, and we're already doing the proper processes, to make sure that we're getting things done in advance as much as possible. All right, so the next big-ticket item here is the Stanley White Recreation Center. I want to touch, touch base on several slides here. The central services have been housed at West New Bern Recreation Center, and we'll be relocating to the Omega Center here soon. City staff has done everything that's possible to stabilize the building, and to the extent possible, prevent any further damages to that structure. New Bern, City of New Bern participates in the National Flood Insurance Program, we have to make sure that we remain in compliance with that program. So, noncompliance with the program would prevent, would prevent our ability to obtain flood insurance. So, we need to make sure that we are, we are, make sure we're in compliance with that program, which the Stanley White Recreation Center falls within the flood plane.
So, layman's terms, can't fix Stanley White where it is, or we would lose the ability to provide flood insurance for our citizens.
Without elevation, sir.
Thank you.
You can't fix that particular building.
Right.
Yeah. Structure and overall damages prevented, prevented the building from being reopened. Masonry cracks are determined, determined to be caused by a differential foundation settlement. In addition to that, the flood plain manager has deemed that a property to be substantially damaged, which requires the structure to be repaired up to code, and that's where the differential settlement comes into play, and the elevation as well. The city's had, it hired an architecture and engineering firm to get, provide cost estimates, to make sure that we're following compliance with FEMA requirements, and trying to get ahead of the game with FEMA. We've had a couple different estimates, $8.2 million is to repair to code without elevation, which cannot be done, or $10.6 million is the estimate to repair, to prepare up to code standards. FEMA's, FEMA's currently reviewing the project and completing the calculations for a 50% rule to determine, determine our eligibility for replacement of that structure.
Can you explain that? So, if they determine the 50% rule, does that mean we would only get half of what the estimated is?
No, that means we would get a replacement of the building.
Essentially meaning that's 50%, greater than 50% of the value damage...
Oh.
Has to meet the 50% rule, which means at that point you have to meet the new codes and the requirements of the new codes.
But we did, didn't we get a, did the consultant say that it was over 50% damage?
Would you like me to give you the summary?
No, I just wanted to know...
Okay. The city's insurance company estimated the damages at $600,000, but they actually stopped writing it $600,000. You only had $1 million, so you had all the other facilities kicked in there, they didn't do that. We were following FEMA's procedure initially, when they came out here, and the initial plan was to provide architect engineering estimates for the cost of repair and replacement and elevation, and that was the initial plan of how FEMA was going to process the Stanley White Center. We submitted all of those costs, and the rule for, there's two rules for the Stanley White Center, the first one being the 50% rule for substantial damage. The, the market value of the building was, was six, determined to be $600,000 from the property appraiser, which puts the 50% threshold at around $300,000. You had, you had $600,000 worth of damages, which means that it was over 50% damage, and so it was determined by the flood program administrator to be substantially damaged. The second 50% rule is another one that I won't go into at this point in time, but based upon some recent redoing of the estimates to take into consideration the differential settlement that has occurred in the building, at the state's request, we had the engineer put that package together, and the facility also met the 50% test under the FEMA 50% rule of repairs versus replacement.
Okay. And one more time again, on this page six, where it stated, we participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, so, but, Altmann Astor said that we can't fix that building, correct? So, essentially, the building has to be removed and elevated?
There's two things that, there's technically three things that can happen to the facility to bring it into compliance. It's determined to be noncompliant now and substantially damaged. You can, you can tear it down and build a new building, if that's the most cost-effective way. You can repair and elevate the existing structure, if that's the most cost-effective way. However, please remember that it's a, it's a brick and concrete structure on a slab, and they are not very easily elevated. And the city, the engineer retained by the city determined that the replacing of the building was by about $3 million more cost-effective than attempting to elevate it. And the third option is that you can dry floodproof the building to bring it into compliance.
Dry floodproof?
Dry floodproof the building, which means that you basically put walls and floodgates around it to prevent the water from coming in in the future. There's a lot of controversy about dry floodproofing, and the reasons that that was not considered at this point in time was after review and evaluation, dry floodproofing is not recommended for flood duration events that last more than 12 hours. You had numerous days that the city, that the water was around and in the building over there, so it exceeded the 12-hour, exceeded the 12-hour recommended limit for dry floodproofing. It's not recommended for areas that have poor soils, or porous soils, or discriminated soils, which means it's of different, different types, because the water will go underneath and come up and crack the slab. So, you have, the differential settlement indicates that you have poor soils in that area over there, and that makes it not a very good candidate for dry floodproofing. The third thing is, is that dry floodproofing is recommended for levels not to exceed two to three feet. The building, as it is now, with the base flood elevation and the freeboard requirement, will be required to go up, I believe, approximately four feet, and so therefore the dry floodproofing level amount would exceed the recommended level amounts.
Okay, so, when we, so I'm just a little confused on the two estimates, one for the value, elevation, and one not. So, if the policy is that we have to be in code, and obviously it has to be elevated, correct?
That is correct.
Why do we have the two estimates? Why wouldn't we just stick with the $10.6 million, because we have no other option but to elevate the building? So, I'm just, what's the...
I explained to you the options for bringing the building into compliance, okay? And under the, under the FEMA rules, and under rules of, you know, fiscal responsibility or common sense, whatever you'd like to call it, okay? If it's going to cost $10 million to elevate the building, but it's going to cost $7 million to build a brand-new building, okay, then the least expensive option is generally, I mean, I suppose that there could be exceptions under historic structures or something to that effect, but those are the dollar figures, and those are the difference between the two.
Got you.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay.
All right, continue on here. The DDD, which is the damage description, it mentions FEMA, so FEMA required step includes inspections. We received the, we did not receive the DDD until August 5th. Staff and consultants have been reviewing the various iterations of this, this DDD, and we finally got this, we finally got it taken care of and submitted, actually yesterday, with our final approval. Unfortunately, there is always a back and forth associated with that, once you get the initial one, to make sure that everything is correct, and you want to make sure that it is as accurate as possible. We have filed all extensions, as Cory noted previously, all extensions have been filed, and we're waiting on the next steps from FEMA. And as city manager noted earlier, you know, we've reached out to our congressional and executive branch leadership, and provided inquiries, have been sought for assistance, and FEMA has noted to us that they, that they are making Stanley White a high priority. And that's everything I have, Mark, appreciate it.
Can I explain to them the issues? I want to explain to you the issues with the Stanley White Center, and I'll try to keep it as non-technical as possible, and keep it simple. You know what the damages are, you know, your insurance adjuster wrote it up at $600,000, your engineer initially wrote it up at 1.5 or 1.8 million dollars, not including the differential settlement issue. Why did he not include the differential settlement issue? The only options for this building are to either elevate it or tear it down, so why would you spend all the time and the money going around and calculating what it would cost to fix those particular items, when they're all going to be remedied with a new facility or elevating one? So, at the request of the state, they said, "This is what we want you to present to FEMA", so we redid those costs. The initial plan for this facility, when we met with FEMA, was, "We're going to do it through the 428 grant process, where you take and submit applicant estimates for the cost of repair, the cost of this, you, the cost of elevation, the cost of a replacement facility." So, the FEMA has all the components that they need to determine what is eligible and the most cost-effective the way to do it, along with your substantial damage letter from the flood program administrator. So, we did all of that, turned it all in, and everything was semi-moving forward, and then all of a sudden, the head of PA up in Raleigh changed... And then all of a sudden, the, uh, the, the head of PA, uh, up in Raleigh changed from, uh, from Tim Eppson to, uh, to Robert Ferguson. And, uh, there were inquiries as to what the status of, uh, of the, of the project is. We kept asking them, have you reviewed the estimates that we have submitted and so on? We couldn't get any answers. So the next thing that came along is, is FEMA says, oh, uh, we're, we're not doing it that way anymore. We're, we're now going to turn around and do up this damage description. And at the last FEMA meeting, I specifically said, what is your plan for the Stanley White Center to move this thing forward? This has been one year and the people are in an uproar in the city. And they said to me, we're going to, uh, develop a scope of work and estimate of the flood damages from the damage description and turn that in and process it. And I said, is that all? And they said, yes. And I said, th- this is the issue. Code triggers are being initiated against the Stanley White Center. And what are code triggers? Code triggers are your floodplain regulations. Your floodplain regulations say that if, if the damages are greater than fifty percent, you have to bring the whole facility into compliance. That is called a code trigger. So the code triggers are being initiated against the, the damaged element and the non-damaged element. And, and those, those elements have to be brought into compliance with code. We have discussed this exhaustively with the state and FEMA, saying, where is FEMA going to address this and when? This is the issue. It's not the issue of the amount of damages. FEMA's gonna do up their estimate of the damages, that'll be the third estimate that's been done. And, and we said, why don't you just use the one that was submitted by the insurance company or submitted by, uh, uh, the, the engineer for the city? They're, they're clearly over the fifty percent rule and move forward. No answer. So how do we get FEMA to recognize the code trigger issue that is involved here? I have no idea. This has been discussed exhaustively with the state and, uh, and the, the rules and regulations have been, uh, explained to them. I have quoted the Stafford Act, I have quoted the CFR, I have showed them exactly. And, and this is the only thing the city is asking FEMA to do. Follow your own regulations. It's part nine point one-one of forty-four CFR, the Congressional Federal Register, that says, when the building is substantially damaged, it must be brought into compliance. That's FEMA's own rulemaking, besides your local flood ordinance. And, and that is the point that we are at now.
So just from my clarification, um, they're basically scrapping the four twenty-eight litigation plan that was submitted a year or with, you know, last year?
We have no idea. We, we have no idea.
So is it, was the DDD an option before, as you're saying this is brand-new process that they're doing?
The, the damage description and dimensions, okay, only captures the, the damages to the facility. It does not capture the code triggers that are being initiated against it, which is, which is a flaw in their FEMA system. It's not, it's, there's no provision for them to do it. We have asked for them to include it. We, when we finally signed it this week, I, I insisted that two caveats be attached to it. One of them being, okay, that the facility has been determined to be substantially damaged and, and code triggers are being forced against the facility. And it's not a simple matter of just repairing the building and, and FEMA, you know, doing up the scope of the work and, and, and cutting you a check for six hundred thousand. The building can't be rebuilt.
So the status of the four twenty-eight, we don't know, they're just, they're giving you the runaround?
The initial way to process this was, we asked for the four twenty-eight grant. Uh, they were, they were supposed to work it and process it in accordance with their own rules and regulations for how a four twenty-eight grant is processed by, by applicant-submitted estimates. And, and that is apparently been thrown out the window. We, we can get no answers as to what they're going to do with this project.
Thank you.
Hence why we are looking for someone that can provide answers, uh, and, uh, and stand by them.
I think the four twenty-eight program is still a valid program. I just think that there's no one that knows how to follow their own rules, at least on the level that we've been working with. Uh, again, I, I think, well, if we get this meeting set up, this is where we would find out some information quickly. Um, this, this four twenty-eight program has been sent to the governor's office, lieutenant governor's office, Senator Tillis's office, Senator Ver's office, and even to the White House. So, uh, you know, some, somebody's gotten to get some, you know, we got to get some attention somewhere here soon.
Hey Corey, the, the fifty percent damage that has to be brought back up to code, what, what level ordinance state's at? Are city ordinance or state or federal?
Um, the, uh, you, you, to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, you must adopt a model ordinance. You can make it stricter and you can make some changes to it. But generally, uh, to be a participant in the National Flood Insurance Program, for, uh, for all your facilities that are in a special flood hazard area that are non-compliant, meaning that, uh, we call them pre-firm because they were built before the flood regulations were, were put into place, or they were, um, built at a level, uh, and you, and you changed your flood elevation levels, which would then bring them into being non-compliant. When, uh, when they are determined to be substantially damaged, meaning that the repairs are, are, are greater than fifty percent of its market value, it must be brought into full compliance. So in answer to your question, it is, it's found in, in your local ordinance. Your, uh, your state, uh, uh, emergency management, uh, department has, has model ordinances and, and I'm not sure if they're particularly applicable to, uh, to the state, uh, uh, to the, to the local level here. They, they have the same thing for their own state facilities, i- i- if you follow, but I, I don't believe that state law, uh, is, is going to apply to, uh, to, to the local part here. And then you have, uh, you have, uh, part nine of the CFR of the federal regulations, uh, that, that, that state that identically the same thing. And, and also, and also authorize FEMA, uh, to, to pay for these code triggers when they are initiated, uh, under part nine of the CFR.
Thank you. The reason I ask that is so no one can say that we couldn't go in and change our local ordinance and save that building, it's not possible to do that.
You are required to uniformly, uh, enforce your flood regulations across the board. And if you do not do so, you jeopardize, uh, you, yourself being pulled from the National Flood Insurance Program, which means that, uh, there will be no flood insurance available through the NFIP. Now, uh, is, is that gonna happen on, on one violation? Probably not, unless you did it deliberately. Uh, however, okay, you will most likely be at a bare minimum put on probation and, uh, and if you, uh, and, uh, and, and, and a penalty imposed to it.
I have a quick question. Based on, um, having to be up to code and right now it's not, and you said the triggers are happening, God forbid we have another hurricane or something and receive damage on that building again, how would that work out?
Once it's substantially damaged, it's, it.
You can't, okay.
It, it, you're just adding more fuel onto the fire, if you wanna call it that. On- once it has gone over that threshold, okay, the, the law is very clear, it must be brought into compliance. I, I explained to you the, the three ways that it, that it can be into, brought into compliance. One of them is not feasible and, and the other two deal with the costs.
Right.
Uh, and, uh, so, so therefore, a- any damages that happen to the building now, um, it, 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 uh, it obviously matters to the city, but, uh, the, uh, i- in terms of enforcement of the rules and regulations, um, it, 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 it is no effect.
Gotcha, thank you. But is this, would this just be a, a regular meeting or will it be a public meeting for the individuals who want to come down? The senators and?
Now that, that'll, that'll kind of be, yeah.
And, and when I said the, the purpose of the proposed meeting was for these two projects, I've outlined to you what the stumbling block is with the Stanley White Center right now and how it, um, at the present time, from all the information that we have gathered, it is not on the path forward to, uh, to produce a fruitful, uh, result, um, by FEMA estimating the amount of flood damages, um, so.
So, okay. So if FEMA, if you're saying if FEMA estimates, estimates that they're, they're just gonna be at the six hundred thousand, you're saying?
They, they would estimate it, um, uh, they would do up their own damage estimate, okay? Uh, and, uh, whatever that would, would, would come out at, uh, would, would be one of the, one of the figures that is involved here, okay? But you also have to bear in mind, all you have to do is go past three hundred thousand and one dollar and it's substantially damaged. E- even if FEMA was to, well, the, the cost to repair the facility had been validated a number of different ways. Uh, and the, the first one being is independently by your insurance company when they said six hundred thousand, and that didn't include everything.
Right.
However, we did not pursue that with your insurance company because you only have, you only had a million dollars' worth of, uh, of insurance, uh, on it. And, and, and just to bring up another point, the, through the National Flood Insurance Program, okay? That adjuster determined it was in excess of five hundred thousand dollars, uh, damage to the facility. That's why they paid you the five hundred thousand dollar policy limit, okay? Your, your secondary carrier determined it was six hundred thousand, uh, and, and whether the, part of the million gets apportioned there or not is a different story.
Right.
But so you, you have that, and then you have your, your engineering firm that is estimated in, in total. And, and remember that both your insurance carriers, that they, they stop writing once they reach the policy limits.
Right.
Okay, and so therefore, we, then we had the engineering firm that didn't stop writing at the policy limits.
And that's what we're trying to do with FEMA?
And, and he came up with, uh, um, I, I believe it was eight million dollars to, um, to fix the differential settlement because the, the only fix for it is to pick the building up, um, and compartmentalized, move it off, okay? And then, and then put it back on again.
Right.
And then he estimated it would be another amount to, to raise it up, which brought it up over ten million.
I know, I know we got a lot of work to do and I know we about beat this dog to death. Uh, did I hear this correctly from somewhere, I don't know, I, it may have been on a state level, that we hired our engineer to do the four twenty-eight, uh, estimates and that FEMA balked at the fact that we hired a local engineer when in fact they encourage you to hire local engineers? Is that correct or close to correct?
I, I won't go, I can go into the details, but I'll, I'll summarize it very quickly because I know you have other things to do. FEMA encourages, under the four twenty-eight grant program, for applicants to submit, uh, engineers' estimates, okay? For, uh, the, for the eligible amount, whether it be the damages or the replacement facility, whatever it would happen to be. And, and then FEMA, um, uh, validates those costs, uh, and, and determines the, uh, the eligibility for the grant. This four twenty-eight grant program is supposed to make the process more efficient, faster, and provide greater flexibility for the funding. Well, you can see how it's worked so far. So in answer to your question, when, when FEMA was, uh, was, was, FEMA did up the damage description, um, they, uh, they, they came down to the building and they stuck one foot in the door and says it smells musty in here and refused to step foot into the building. And we, we told them, look, the, the city goes in there every day, uh, three insurance team, or two insurance teams have gone through there, uh, the engineers have gone through there. Uh, and, uh, but, you know, we, we can't force anybody to go into the building, so the question came up with, well, how do you do up the damage descriptions if they're not going, gonna go into the building? So we said, here's the insurance adjuster's estimate where they, where they stopped working, and, and here is an, a, uh, an engineer's estimate, okay? That according to your program, you're supposed to use. And their answer was, oh, we can't use that, okay? You paid for it.
Yeah.
In direct contradiction to their own rules. So I'm sorry to take so much time to explain that to you, this is a level of frustration that's, that's beyond belief.
All right, anything else on the FEMA reimbursement process? All right, um, so if not, we'll go ahead and move to our second topic.
Thanks, Corey.
Thank you.
All right, so, uh, item number two is our discussion on the City Hall annex. And, uh, uh, as I mentioned, I forwarded each of you, um, I guess, kinda go back in a little history here, um, at the direction of the board, they had requested that, uh, reach out to, um, an architectural firm to look at, um, the potential for an elevator in City Hall and, uh, potential other options if it was to be exterior of City Hall. Provided each of you the final report that was done by MBF Architects. And I've also included, uh, with you at your desk, uh, some larger scale drawings so that you can see it a little easier instead of going in an eight and a half and eleven, uh, eight and a half by eleven, uh, sheet of paper, uh, so that we can discuss these options. But, uh, just briefly, uh, so I'm gonna go through what, what was basically performed. The first sheet that you have, and I'm talking about the sheets that have, uh, the drawings, um, basically is the existing City Hall as it sits on the left-hand side with the aerial, uh, topography shown, uh, to kinda show the building and surrounding areas and how it sits on the property and the parking that's behind it. Um, and then to the right-hand side, you can actually see the, the existing first floor layout of where the office spaces are, the conference rooms, the, uh, entryways, the staircases, so forth and so on. Uh, so that's included on, uh, the A dash one hundred sheet. Basically, it's, it's a basic layout of the current parking lot of the building, as you can see. On sheet A dash one zero one, um, uh, this was where the architects came into the building, they, after they did all of their dimensioning, which is on the, the ladder, the, the back sheet, which is A one oh six. You can see where they actually came in, they did dimensioning on every, all the interior walls, where HVAC ducts were, where lots of different amenities, bathrooms, so forth and so on, were located, structural components, uh, so forth and so on. And basically tried to identify a general location where an elevator shaft could connect, basically from the basement floor to the third floor, uh, accessing all floors of City Hall. The alignment, they, they indicate in the, in the plan, basically, or the, the, uh, the study that they did, that the alignment of the existing spaces is not completely exact at this time. However, they acknowledge that a new shaft would need to be constructed in any case, thereby requiring peripheral work to the adjacent spaces on each level, which basically means they identified the general location of where the shaft would probably work on all of the floors, basement all the way to the third floor. But obviously, there would be some peripheral work that would be necessary in order for us to fit the shaft up, uh, in that particular area. As you can see, it has, uh, some pretty significant impacts. It takes out a bathroom down in the basement, it takes out the vault, uh, where the minutes are stored on the first floor, uh, the second floor. Uh, it takes out the vault that's located, uh, back here, um, uh, in the, I guess, at one time the finance department used, now it's kinda more empty. But it's, uh, between here and the, uh, conference room that we have here on the second floor. And then obviously exits out in one of the office spaces upstairs where IT is currently located. A dash one oh two, um, this is a, I guess, a follow-up to what you saw on A one oh one, which locates the, uh, the elevator within that shaft area, but provides the external accessibility from the street, um, to this particular location. Do you wanna put it on the screen?
No, we just.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Sure.
Mr. Davis, when you were talking with them all, I know that you, we're all concerned with the security of this building. And I'm sure before you start telling these architects, you did make mention that we're probably as a board gonna be looking at additional security and obviously this is just expanding on egress, ingress to the building that's gonna have to be secure, is that correct?
Yeah, so, so as you will see here on A, and, and quite frankly, uh, option, this, this first option, which is A dash one oh one, basically says, hey, here's where an elevator could be identified within the building. It does not address external accessibility to the building. That's on page A dash one oh two. So if you look at this map, they've identified where a possible exterior ramp could be located to be able to get handicap accessibility into the building and then ultimately to the elevator where it would be located. And as you can see, it creates, uh, as you mentioned, Mayor, another security point, I guess, that you would have to basically, uh, account for to where, uh, people could come in through that way because it would have to be open, it would have to be accessible, uh, so that people could get in there. And ultimately provides a secondary, or I, I guess it's a tertiary access at that point. You've got the front entrance, which is, uh, at the top right corner, you've got the back entrance, uh, where most staff come in, and then you have this second, uh, this third entrance, uh, that would be located where the ramp would come in. And that would basically also, um, it, it, the, the ramp would come out basically where the, uh, the, the flags are right now. So take the United States flag of the three flags that we have out here in this area, basically would exit out at that particular location onto the sidewalk. So one would come up, circle back around to meet the, the ADA accessible requirements as far as wheelchair ramps, and then come up into the building, in the bathroom, uh, that. And then come up into the building, in the bathroom, uh, that's adjacent to the the mayor's office currently.
Over on this location?
No, 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 ma'am, over here on this side where the flagpoles and the DeGraff and Reed bus, all of that stuff would have to be moved. The church stuff. Yeah, so the top, the top of your page on A one oh two is Pollock, or I'm sorry, it's Craven Street and the right-hand side would be Pollock Street. Let me just do this, I think I think it'll be a little easier.
I'm just a little slow on this. Oh, on that street. Uh, Pollock Street. You're right.
Put this on the TV.
Oh, okay, 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 yeah.
Mark, while while you're getting set up, just a question. Obviously, I I'm sure they look at the structural integrity and make sure footings and things like that can be put where they are. My only question, just looking at this plan, is why that exact location for the proposed site of the elevator? When you could push it out six feet and avoid the vaults and things of that nature? Do you know why it's that exact spot?
I think that's where it lined, I mean, this is my guess, I've not talked to them before. They were looking at how it lined up from all the way to the top floor. So that it's what you're going to hit when you come up.
I think essentially what what happens is you're gonna have to go back and look at this A one, this A one oh one sheet. If you look at the four different levels of the floor, so you're saying take this particular location and move it six feet out.
All of them, I mean, I know if you move the shaft on one floor, it's gonna move on all of them. But what I'm saying is, in the basement floor plan, you're eliminating a restroom. In the first floor plan, you're in a vault. The second floor plan, you're in a vault. The third floor plan is in just an office. But if you push that out six feet and just put it in the common area, I mean, you're you're disrupting a lot anyway.
Right.
I was just curious if there was a reason they said it had to be exactly right there.
Um, I I wish there, I wish that they were here to answer that question, but this was the recommendation they had. Trip, but unfortunately was unable to make it tonight. Uh, he did come in brief, uh, I didn't ask that question of him yesterday. My guess is, is that it probably had something to do with the um, involvement of the mechanics of making it work, plus all of the open spaces. And I'm sure structurally, like you said, they looked at some of the things within uh, the the recessed ceilings that we have on the certain floors to be able to see how that would impact uh, in these particular locations. So I think that, you know, some of the biggest impact might be more uh, into this second floor, um, and and also um, the first floor here. Which, you know, all this, a lot of these walls you see, which are these these walls right in here with the smaller, those are all minor. The 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 big masonry walls you'll see, those are more of your major structural components. And then you have uh, the uh, the columns that are located by the circles there, those are more of your structural components within the building. And and I'm sure there probably is some required structural uh, needs for the elevator access as far as the shaft goes as well in constructing that. So I'm sure they were trying to utilize some of the existing structural components to have that elevator shaft located within there. As with anything, you're dealing with an old historic building, um, and you're gonna run into, you know, one, one, once you've cut something, you you're 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 in the game at that point. And uh, you're really starting to make some impacts and who knows what you're gonna run into. Anybody that's dealt with restoring a historic home will tell you that uh, they actually made a movie about it called The Money Pit. Uh, but if anybody has ever watched that. But anyways, that's, you could potentially run into some major issues depending on what they run into. But that's the general location, and this was the possible exterior ramp location here. Now, at one time, we had looked at potentially running a ramp up here to try to get into the steps and bring people into this front entrance of City Hall here. Uh, however, you know, that's, there's, there's other issues with the way that the marble area underneath the portico, I guess if you wanna call that, is is recessed from where the floor level is, the first floor. That creates some issues and would have to be addressed in that particular location too. Um, as well as probably creating an additional step, it starts impacting the exterior aesthetics of the building. And especially if you were to run uh, that that wheelchair ramp here. You see what the length to meet the elevation requirements to get into the building based on the ADA code is for this exterior ramp here. So imagine you'd have to run that entire length all the way there to be able to get in.
Mark, wouldn't you think that they figured from occupancy standpoint to meet bathroom requirements? That they couldn't afford to lose those two half baths versus losing the vault is probably why they decided on the vault area?
I I would say so, uh, there, if you look at the basement plan, there are still, um, there's still a restroom area that's available downstairs. So if you look here at the basement floor plan, you still have a restroom here, there would be some retrofit that would need to be make that handicap accessible. Which means you'd have to open up this doorway here into this office area to make that handicap accessible. Or you'd have to create some other component. We do have a a shower that's back in this room here, uh, so there's plumbing that's available in that particular area that could be used, but.
Currently, the bathrooms here are not ADA accessible.
Not there. And then obviously, you've got the the second floor plan, um, if you're coming in, and what this doesn't show is on the second floor plan here, I'm sorry, the first floor plan here. That's the restroom where the entrance would be coming in, um, is the way I'm understanding it. So that would probably being that bathroom at that particular location would go away. But we still have the two restrooms back here, men's and women's, uh, that's in the back of the building. And then obviously, uh, the third floor, it would not impact the restrooms, which is here. And then the fourth floor, they have restrooms here, which would not impact that, uh, in those particular locations. And then, um, that leads us to A dash one oh three, which is option two. Option two is more of a uh, annex, I guess if you wanna call it a smaller annex. Uh, that provides a ground floor lobby entrance from the sidewalk, uh, same kind of location, uh, kind of where the flagpoles are located and and the DeGraff and Reed bus that's out, out adjacent to City Hall. Essentially building more of a shaft type situation that's provides one staircase as well as the elevator, um, to that first floor. Now, the benefit is, is this one would have, this elevator shaft here would have a double-sided, kind of like if you go into a hospital, sometimes they have uh, the doors on both sides. That would have a dual-sided because they're gonna need that for the ground, the ground floor lobby to be able to receive people there. And then it would go up basically a half floor, uh, to reach the first first floor level and then eventually up to the second and the third floor. And you would have basically this little uh, entrance or crossover on each one of the floors up above. So this, the first, second, and third floors would have that entrance. Uh, and it would be basically a connection to the building at that particular case. There would be some area back here that are planned as new restrooms, uh, that would be located in these areas. Since you have the loss of the restrooms, the annex here would provide restrooms on both the first and the second and the third floors. And then you could open up some space up above, um, in in those particular floors if you need to. Those would, those would be built at ADA blocks, yes. Uh, so as you can see down here in the summary, the first floor area be uh, an additional eleven hundred and sixty square feet. The second, third floor areas, eleven hundred and sixty square feet each, not shown, uh, for a total of about thirty-four hundred and eighty square feet. So kind of picture this as if, you know, the city used to have the Dunn Building across the street and operated facilities there. Essentially, you're creating that same tower and attaching it to one, two, three floors.
Right.
And uh, one drawback to this is the basement, it would not have uh, elevator access. Which at most of the time, we, the the basement is used for more storage than it is anything else. And it's not necessarily uh, accessible to the public, other than if someone needs to use the restrooms currently. Uh, we do allow some public restrooms down there, but essentially, if you add these restrooms here as seen in this annex option here, then the public would have accessibility to those bathrooms, uh, on the first floor for public restrooms. And that leads us to um, the other option, which is A dash one oh four. And A dash one oh four is more of a um, option to where we wanted them to it, to look at the possibility, if we were to look at our development services and the HR department, the facility that's over there. Given um, the so, the the immediate success of the Workforce Development Center and what we're seeing. Or if we wanted to privatize and take that out and sell it privately, uh, and allow someone to purchase where development services and HR are currently located. And then bring in, consolidate those options here in City Hall. So essentially bringing HR inspections, you'd have your IT, your admin, your finance, all of that here in one campus. This is the option, so once again, this is Craven Street up above, this is Pollock Street to your right. Uh, this is the entryway into City Hall that currently exists. This is the first floor of the, this, this is the main City Hall complex as it is. This plan maintains the autonomy of City Hall in itself, maintaining the historic integrity of the building as it is. But provides an annex area that would be built basically where the grass area is, the flagpoles, the DeGraff and Reed bus, through the grass area. And then also taking a large area of the parking lot and building a larger annex to build the square footage necessary. So we had them do a space needs analysis, it was about twelve thousand four hundred fifty square feet or two hundred fifty square feet, something like that, at their current location and their current needs. And this plan comes up with a total square footage on the first and second floor total, that's nineteen thousand seven hundred square feet. The benefits of this plan, it still maintains this same kind of 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 entryway off of the Pollock Street side with the ground floor lobby. Steps up to the half floor, basically on the first floor to provide access into the main City Hall. You still have the elevator shaft at this particular location here with the stairs that take you up and down, uh, providing more uh, accessibility to uh, for fire escape and things like that. Essentially eliminating the need for this fire escape that's currently located behind where the mayor sits, it goes up two different floors, so that could be eliminated. You would have the restrooms, they would be reconfigured in a different way, uh, at this particular location here, providing a hallway accessibility corridor area. That would lead to first floor office spaces on this side, some more restrooms here, some mechanical areas, maybe even office spaces back in here, it just depends. Then, and keep in mind, this is a massing, this isn't like a full-blown, like layout of walls, interior walls, electrical plans and everything else. This is a massing, just to give you an idea, we'll go over kind of some rough cost estimates, kind of worst-case, I I think scenarios on what these are here in a few minutes. Um, and then at this point, I I'd hope that if the board wants to move forward with one or the other, then at that point, I can kind of get the engineer or get the architect to explore some options. Come up with maybe some some visuals, vertical uh, plans and things like that, so you can kind of see some things uh, of what it would look like. Uh, keeping on with this, uh, once again, restrooms here, mechanical on the first floor, uh, would have some some additional stuff on the second floor, I'll I'll show you that plan here in a minute. Uh, some office annex space, some more uh, first floor office space area here. Another means of ingress egress was stairs and an elevator on this side, which this is Craven Street now. So you have basically two entryways in, you have the ground floor entrance, you have an elevator, you have steps up to what would be that first floor entrance here, leading into the main City Hall as it exists currently. So that's the first floor. Second floor is kind of a mirror of what you have, less, um, this area here, which is necessi, is is needed. It kind of basically could, at that point, be used uh, as another office space or or waiting area or something like that, if necessary. Once again, highlights of this kind of create this second floor entrance and ties into uh, what would be the offices up here, currently where the finance department is. And then this is the conference room, peg room, courtroom. Uh, the big benefit of this is it creates this secondary entrance to the courtroom, essentially sort of mirroring what you have here with this little vestibule, if you wanna call it that. And it creates that same entryway on this side, uh, and would allow the public to enter. So essentially what you would do, I would think, is this portion here of City Hall for courtroom nights would basically be closed off to the public, could be locked, um, to the public. The public would enter in here, they could come up to elevator or take the steps either way they wish to do so. And they would come into the courtroom through handicap accessible elevator area into the courtroom, basically through these two windows that you see right here. Obviously, restrooms for the public as this, and and once again, this is kind of rough locations of where these restrooms could be. And in talking with Trip, some of this stuff could potentially be relocated or or there could be, you know, hallway corridor space that would be developed here. And this would be office annex spaces here, but then the the hallway could provide accessibility to uh, the restrooms in that particular location. Um, as far as the the security thing that you talked about, Mayor, that could be incorporated once we start getting a little bit further into where offices are specifically located within the building. Once again, this is just kind of massing, but as people enter, um, some of these areas, you could have reception. And then ultimately, people would need to be buzzed through to provide security and uh, accessibility into staff areas, so forth and so on. So you hopefully can eliminate some of the Virginia Tech or Virginia uh, beach type situations that occurred not too long ago. Mainly, uh, once again, trying to maintain the historic integrity of City Hall as it exists now. The major uh, primary corridors basically being Craven and Pollock Street are maintained on both the first and the second area. This would basically be your tertiary areas, I think, uh, with, is how HPC refers them to. And the entrance ways would be built into um, the City Hall through those tertiary areas. And that's a, uh, essentially it, uh, as far as the the um, this building. This would be a two-story, uh, and the elevator lobby with restrooms connects in the same configuration at the third floor. So essentially, there would be a section of this built up on the third floor. This portion here would be a first and second floor only. This elevator area here, uh, would provide the accessibility into that third floor for IT if they were to stay there or whatever effective use that we wanted to make for the third floor, uh, for that particular area.
Mark, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, I see, I I really like the idea of, I reckon it's Plan Three, mainly because we're bringing people back down and having a lot of our offices under one roof instead of spread out throughout New Bern. But my question is, what, why, what's the need of two elevators?
I agree, that would be my question too.
You know, what?
Um, I I'm not as as up on the um, the need for the two elevators. It may be become more of a um, like staffing and how much you have in this particular location, how many staff you have, multiple means of ingress egress. I even asked him about the stairwells, why there would need to be two stairwells. Theoretically, uh, in removing, if you remove this fire escape, you want to have multiple means of ingress egress cause a fire. This particular location here, and Bobby, you you know more about the fire code than I do, but that is not necessarily considered a very um, primary way of ingress egress in a fire because it's not fire-rated. Uh, being an old historic buildings, uh, that typically you're, in any new construction, you're looking at fire-rated capabilities of stairwells to be able to get people out. Or at least hold them until help can arrive, try to, uh, for for, to try to rescue. So that was basically what this up, this this, this stairwell here and this stairwell here accomplish in ingress egress in the staircase area. The elevators, uh, not positive on that, um, other than the fact that this one here would go three floors, this one here is only going two. So I don't know if that makes any kind of difference, um, or what, but that would kind of basically be the the difference that I would see. And and here, if you notice on, if you, if you've ever been up on the third floor of City Hall, technically, there is not a third floor access. You're accessing the third and a half floor in that particular location. Cause essentially, you've got a a half floor to get to the first floor, and then you got this first, the second, then you got the third floor, but then there's steps that go up to what we call the old tub room. And essentially a bunch of storage rooms and things that basically is almost like another half floor above that. So if you create an elevator accessibility into that point, you're creating it into the half floor, which doesn't get you to the full third floor. You'd have to have some other way to get it down and and do that.
Mark, what's your head count of employees that would be added back under this facility?
Jerry, you can look at the budget, but I think HR's seven, if I'm not mistaken. Is it six? You got Sharon, Sonia? Yeah, five, I'm sorry, five at HR, and then I think you've got twenty, twenty-three-ish, twenty. Yeah, five, I'm sorry, five at HR, and then I think you've got twenty, twenty-three-ish, twenty, something like that. In, in development services and inspections? Does that include inspections? Does that include MPO?
So I'm gonna ask this question for Alderman Bingo, where are they gonna park?
So the, the beauty of this plan, the beauty of this plan is that the city owns the parking lot across the street. Yes, those properties are, those, those lots are currently leased, some of them we do maintain for city staff to park in. But ultimately that entire parking lot across the street at the corner of, of Craven and Pollock Street, uh, adjacent to the Register of Deeds is owned by the city. Some of those spaces we actually lease to the county.
So how many spaces will become available over there and what's the net? Because you're losing what, twenty-five or so out of City Hall?
Um, I did a count, uh, let's see, it's, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, twelve. Seventeen, I'd, I'd say you're probably twenty-three-ish right over there because I think there's, there's some funky, there's some funky stuff that goes on back here.
We're talking about behind City Hall?
No, there's, there's twenty-five or so out here.
Right, and I think there's a total of about forty, forty-seven, I think.
Yeah, so you're losing twenty-three here, but there's forty-seven available across the street.
So that, that lot's usually full most of the time during the day?
Cause they're leased out.
So where are they going?
Lease, lease parking.
Public parking lot, or they can?
County will have to provide, I don't know how many spaces the county leases, but they lease several.
Yeah, uh, they lease several, um, there are some, there are, I think several residential twenty-four hours, if I'm not mistaken, that's in that lot. I know, uh, Petcha Store has?
We have two.
Two of them, um. County has thirteen spaces.
And then County thirteen has quite a few of them there too, huh?
Yeah, law, just a couple of law offices that right here on Pollock Street that have quite a few of them. I'm, I'm, I'm always thinking that, uh, Stubbs and Purdue has a couple of them as well. I don't know, JR, you probably have, I think Stubbs and Purdue has.
It will, it will present its challenges, it's, you know, and I don't know that, um, if they've even looked, if they're gonna do something like this. Even if, you know, would we go to maybe a first floor of parking underneath and build it above, I don't know. I mean, that was some, a question I was going to ask, so that you would retain some parking under there.
And my last question in this larger scale, the third option, I guess. It's adding almost twenty thousand, and you said that the needs assessment showed currently we would need about twelve. So you've got some building there for additional future growth?
Yeah.
Does this plan at all utilize the basement?
Uh, this plan here, um, has no basement accessibility, it does not go down. Uh, so essentially it'd be surface level and up. Um, it does not provide any elevator accessibility to the basement.
Right, my, the reason I was asking that is, is there a, a hybrid version in between this small little annex? On A one oh three versus A one oh four to where you utilize the basement, even if it required improvements? And keep some of the parking on the parking lot next door to us?
Uh, it's, it's definitely something to look at, I don't know, um. I'm just looking here real quickly.
I see what you're saying, almost eliminating this twenty-nine hundred square feet here because that's really where the parking is. And maybe incorporate it more into the office annex, office spec, try to reconfigure that area there.
Just curious if there are substantial cost savings potentially.
You'd probably, in order to do that, if, if I was laying this out, um, what, what essentially you'd need to do is you'd take out these two driveway entrances here.
Right.
And you would need to create it probably a single entrance that would have, not, you wouldn't be able to do angular parking. You'd have to do ninety-degree parking each way, essentially that's, uh, so that'd be twenty-four, eighteen and eighteen. So that's sixty feet, fifty, is that right, sixty feet? Alright, so, so sixty feet, um, sixty-four feet roughly, uh, is what you need. So, so let's say it's sixty, sixty feet, you'd have to come off of that property line. So if we took it, that brick wall is right there, so you'd have to come in here, redo a parking area that would basically be sixty feet wide. And come straight back and then try to maximize how much square footage you could get out of that property right there. That would provide you probably, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, so your seven's about like that. You might could get ten spaces back here, uh, and then you'd, you'd need a little turnout so people could back out in these last spaces here and go out. So let's say you could keep twenty, maybe, maybe eighteen to twenty spaces if you were to back them up ninety degrees like that. And then ultimately you would do something like this.
And could that surface parking lot you just looked at be used as a deck, multi-level deck?
Over across the street?
Right here where you just said.
Um, not, not if you're doing that, no, uh, you would not be able to, you wouldn't be able to, because, um, uh. I don't think the, I don't think the, the money would be, I think the money would be cost ineffective for you to do it. And what you would actually gain as far as parking spaces if you would go upper levels. You really need something about the size of, well, you really need something about the size of the parking lot we got across the street in order to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
We do have a beautiful free parking lot at the end of Craven that has seventy-two spaces that anybody can park.
It's gonna have about forty less when everybody here and over there has to park over there.
So Mark, what is the difference in the cost if you're?
Okay.
Plan on having two elevators?
Just, just rough, this is, this is rough, and this is where we kind of have to, and, and like I said, we're, we're talking massing at this point. And, and Trip kind of gave rough numbers for this. So the option here, option one, basically interior elevator with a ramp outside. Uh, he put a rough number of about a million on that. And hopes that it would be somewhere near that, but once again, you start cutting in exterior, interior walls and a bit historic building, trying to do all of that. That becomes an issue, and keep in mind, these other ones, um, they do not, they do not interrupt or disturb any of the interior building walls. Or any of that stuff of City Hall as it is now. So the, what his worry was, is if you get in here and you start getting structural things, then you're, you may, it may expand beyond just that little small red footprint that you see there on your drawing. Okay, this particular plan here, uh, he put about one and a half, one point five million. As a rough estimate on that. And this one, which is your larger scale plan, bringing all of the stuff, stuff in here. And obviously that's not incorporating what you're talking about, Alderman Odom, as if you were to scale this down and actually make the parking lot over here. But this plan here, he, he put a, a high number of about five million on it to do that. Once again, not interrupting any of the existing integrity of the historic building. Um, JR has provided you, that's at your desk, um, and unless there's any other questions, then I'll, I'll talk about them, uh, from over there if need to. JR has provided you, uh, some estimates with regards to debt financing. We've provided anywhere from a million to s- six million, uh, for ten years and fifteen years at interest rates of two point five percent, which is the first two sections. The next two sections is at three percent at ten and fifteen years. And, um, the third section is three and a half percent. I will say, um, I was talking with, um, Craig Warren from Craven County, uh, they're actually, uh, they just took out a note, uh, for the repairs. And, um, new updates and renovations for the convention center, uh, they went out and took a note out for ten million dollars. And I think it was two point two percent is the rate that they got. So tried to provide some options here, um, so financing right now, the interest rates are really good, they're, they're beneficial if you are to look at, uh, debt service financing for this. But this will tell you, uh, we, we kind of wanted to lay out to you what the a- average annual debt service would be, um, uh, for these particular properties. And then what I also asked JR to do is, uh, show what an estimated required tax rate increase, if y'all were to look at that, would be to cover the debt service. And the estimated required value increase as far as valuation of the city's, um, taxable properties and personal properties. Ad blor, personal property would be in order for us to meet that requirement. So I wanted to try to provide you a little bit of, this, this is what it would cost. This is kind of some options if you were to look at tax, or if you were to look at what growth the city needs to have over the next whatever time period. Would need, uh, for us to be able to meet that.
JR, where you have NA, so under like fifteen years, two point five percent, does that mean you could borrow it at that with no impact to our current?
No, uh, no ma'am, in, in A in those situations means I would not actually go out fifteen years for those, for those values. I'd only go ten.
Probably wouldn't, it probably wouldn't be prudent to go fifteen years on a million or two and a half million, you'd probably go less, or you'd go ten years at that point.
Because you don't want to pay the debt service?
No, you just don't, I mean, the, the interest, it doesn't make sense to pay the interest on something for that long on that smaller amount. That's what I have, uh, so at this point, um, we're looking for next steps that the board wants to pursue, if any. Trip, um, did mention that, um, would be happy to work out some, some, um. I guess, what do they call them, uh, some, some pictures or whatever if they were to do that. But ultimately, um, trying to narrow it down to an option would be better, uh, in doing so. Um, and then we could certainly move forward, uh, with, uh, getting some renderings and, and some potential spacing layouts. If you were to look at option three especially because it requires so much more office layout and, and things like that. If you're looking at options one and two, uh, probably a lot less, but then you could have somewhat of a, uh, an idea if we were doing renderings on options one and two. What, uh, what it would look like on the exterior of the building if you were standing on the street, I guess if you want to see that, uh, the aesthetic impact from, from the outside.
Yes, Steve, I know that you talked about some of the staff coming back, and I know we've also talked about if we were to do it over again. The emergency operations center might would, and particularly with, um, some of the comments and concerns of the county as to communication level with our EOC and theirs. Um, I, I think some on the board probably would think that the EOC location here within a block of the county, you know, would, would work better. I'm, I'm just glad we have EOC, uh, the resiliency factor and the, um, you know, it, it, just looking around. It looks to me like City, City Lumerton, City of Rocky Mount and others are finding that, uh, you know, monolithically speaking, having a good-sized City Hall where the major department functions operating. I know that you probably from visionary sense are, are looking at where this city wants to go, needs to go. And obviously the city in New Bern in the last twenty, thirty years has made some major, uh, decisions that were quite a bit of money at the time. The new fire department and, uh, the police department, these were major, major expenditures of the city that were, were sorely needed. And I know at that time, uh, Chief Astor, these, these were some big decisions. And, you know, you look back and it's like, how would, how would we not have done some of these things? So I think that this elevator situation is, is a similar thing. I, I can't imagine how for the next, uh, three hundred years, this city, uh, if it's truly gonna represent the citizens. Can operate with set stairs that, um, just totally are incompatible with, um, everything from ADA to just, just, just respect for the citizens to be able to attend meetings. And, um, you know, I'm, I'm for any one of these, I'm not, I, I don't think I'm a person that goes out on a limb spending money just to be spending it. But, you know, any one of these is looking good to me to get the city, you know, this is not a decision for the next one to five years. This, this is a major, major decision that we want to think about. I know we got, we have a lot of issues on our plate. I cannot wait till we can resolve the salmon white, to me holistically, you know, holistically speaking, to, to heal our city. Uh, from that major hurricane and, and the mental trauma of, of what, uh, many in the city are going through. You know, I, I absolutely do not in any way mean to discount the concerns and, and of, of, of the resiliency and the health of our city. And I, I just think that, please board, make a decision on this, I, I really, I, I, I'll go with any of them, just get, and I, you know, listen to this, go ahead.
Um, I personally, um, like the idea of combining, uh, the, the different departments in Plan C. My only question would be like Alderman Odom stated that, you know, with the, the hurricane, we've dished out twelve million dollars. And, you know, the money is slowly coming in, and we've seen from past hurricanes that we're still getting money. To, you know, what's the timeframe that we're looking to actually start this and move on it in regards to the fund balance? And, and how we are able to go ahead and, um, take money out without worrying for the next budget? Okay, we haven't, say we haven't received any FEMA money, how are we gonna pay out without having to impact raising taxes?
Sure, I think, that's a great question, um, I think that, um, realistically, um, you're probably, um. I would put a three-year number or three-year date on this if we were to start with design plans and tell the architect to go on it tomorrow. I think you're probably looking at, um, nine, let's call it six to twelve months for, uh, design, HPC reviews. Uh, all the different permitting that would be necessary, uh, things like that before. And, and you're talking about minimal cost at that point realistically, you're talking, you know, tens to maybe a hundred thousand dollars in design costs or whatever that number may be. So you're, you're talking minimal cost, the, the big number is when the construction gets started, you set up a project fund and you actually start constructing. We start building that number and at the end of it, you close it out with the debt financing. We would go out to bid on that, try to get the lowest debt that we possibly could as we bid that out, um, on the construction. So, uh, that's after the bids would come in, obviously before we'd even do any of that, you would kind of know if, once plans are done. What the, the architect estimates that cost to be and what those bids would come in at. So I think realistically, you're probably looking at a thirty-six month process here before that number hits the books. If you understand what I'm saying.
Okay, and then my other question, I know we probably talked about it before. What was the reason why we didn't want to utilize the parking lot that we have to build it up in the garage and literally have? You know, where it has the offices and everything and the garage and it connects the City Hall, well, is it this area? That street over there, I mean, that, is that where the parking lot is?
So this, this is where our parking lot is, right here, yes.
And then?
And you're talking about the, the one we own over here next to the Register of Deeds?
Register of Deeds, okay, so what was the issue on the idea of trying to utilize the space that we already had in regards to parking? Which also could create more parking and having some sort of bridge or whatever in a building?
Yeah, um.
Attach, attaching, making a building or?
Yeah, the issue was in order to meet, in order to meet the maximum use of the property, which wasn't even, honestly, it was gonna, it wasn't gonna be offices. It was going, the, the two concepts were, uh, commercial first floor and residential above or a hotel concept.
Okay.
On this particular corner in an L shape. And the reason why it honestly didn't move forward is because of the need for the county to participate. So that you could mass enough on the property to make, make it worthwhile for a developer to come in and do it.
Okay.
Uh, one, one question, through the last year, um, I, I, where, where are we on our fund balance, JR?
Uh, fund balance for the general fund is going to, yeah, I'm estimating somewhere around, uh, twenty-five to thirty percent for this, uh, for the end of last year.
I mean, I, I think, you know, we, we set that policy to stay within that, but I think for what we've been through with the amount of money spent on the storm. I, I would say around the twenty-five to fifty percent fund balance has not been bad.
No, I, I feel pretty confident financially in, I, I mean, I, I would tell you, um, uh, if, if I had worries about presenting either one of these three options to you. Financially, uh, of being able to do that, um, obviously that twenty-five to thirty percent, I think, uh, as we ended the fiscal year was after we spent twelve, twelve million. Or eight of that million dollars out of our fund balance. So once that kind of money starts coming back in, that number's gonna get restored somewhat.
And I don't anyway mean to, uh, leave out the fact that we as a city are, are looking toward the growth of the western part and a fire station and some fire trucks. And I know that we had discussed in last year, uh, some debt coming off that would enable us to incur some more debt, so. us to incur some more debt, so I know these are, um, these are big financial decisions, but they're, they're just, they're just good healthy decisions this morning, yes ma'am.
Question for you, Mark, uh, the mayor, he alluded to it, but I want to take it a step further, so in the effort to have a more resilient EOC closer to the county, whatever, are there resiliency funds that might help us pay for a building where we could put the EOC in that building and then receive funds to defray the cost, is that a possibility?
Would be happy, more than happy to investigate that, have I investigated that at this point? No, um, if, if, you know.
I mean, is that a possibility or is that a pie in the sky?
No, I, I, I think it could, it could be a possibility, um, um, I'm, I'm not sure if there's a ton of, of funding out there for EOC stuff, but given the severity of the couple storms we've had recently, that might be an option, I'm not saying it's off the table, it may be that there's some private money that, through grants and foundations and things like that, that could potentially be an option, um, happy to have, uh, staff or the, our grant writer research some of that, see if that's a, um, an option for us.
And again, you know, I, it's important to me to respect the, um, historical integrity of this building, um, so I'm for anything that's not going to destroy its fabric, so having the additional building would be primary to me, having the staff back downtown would really be good, I know that JR would probably like to have more of his finance staff located here, which would kind of centralize what he does, and again, use this building for its purpose, we as aldermen, you know, we need our constituents, but we don't really have a space to meet our constituents because either they can't get in the building because of the steps, the conference room's done, it, it could then open up and create spaces for us to have an office or something for us to use to meet our constituents, and so I just see the possibilities by opening up this space that this building, our historic building gets used more by our board for greeting the public and doing things so that our public could be part, I mean, for years, we've kept out so many people from this building, which is the building of the people because we didn't have an elevator, and, I mean, I'm, I know how hard it was for Jerry to get up here tonight, but he's here, how many times, Ms. Sampson's here just about at all of our meetings, and I know she struggles getting up those stairs, but yet she comes, and I just want to be able, I think the most important thing we've ever do is just get an elevator some way, somehow, so I'm like the mayor, I'm good with these, I'd like, I, I agree with Alderman Harris that we, the idea of bringing all the staff together is a good idea, but if we can find some other resources such as resiliency funds, that always would sweep the pie.
I'm, I am happy to research those, um, I, I would, I, I would advise you to go in this decision, uh, expecting to pay five million if that's the number for the annex, and if anything that we get is, is, reduces that amount, that's, that's gravy on, on the, on the food there, so.
I'm not a fan of the two elevators either, so.
And, and like I said, there may be a reason, and I don't, I, I wish Trip would have been here, he might have been able to answer more technically those questions, uh, but, uh, I, I failed to ask him that yesterday when we met.
I would guess that by time, the grand scheme of things, that second elevator's probably not, the cost is not going to be that, that great to have it, but, um, a couple questions, so the mayor alluded to the fact that this is a, you know, monumental decision, something that obviously the city hall has been here for, I don't know ever how many, hundreds of years.
No, like eighteen nineties.
Is there any reason, JR, are we limited to only financing this for fifteen years?
No.
So we can't finance it long?
We, we could potentially finance for another, for twenty, I, if, I'm trying to keep where the, the extent of the debt limited, but.
I mean, it's not, it's not a vehicle, it's not a wear item, it's something that's an investment like your home, it's.
Right.
You finance your house for thirty years, most people, um, so, you know, that is an option we could do, is look at what, because if the numbers came in at two point two percent of the convention center, um, you know, you, you, you're always conservative on this, I appreciate it, so that's another opportunity.
And that, that was a fifteen-year loan as well, and, and, and speaking with Craig, he, he mentioned too, they generally try to keep their stuff at fifteen years or less, doesn't mean that you can't do a twenty-year, you could, um, obviously that's going to come probably with a higher interest rate, but if that higher interest rate's two and a half percent, you've got the numbers right there, that you could look at what a twenty year is, and a twenty year, obviously your average annual debt service would come down.
County has more money than we do, too, as well, but, um, my other, my other comment would be, I think just like the convention center, um, they're, they were forced to make some improvements, but they've also taken a decision to improve and update, I think personally, when you're going to have what will be your new main entrance into this building, you're going to have to do some realignment of some things on the existing office space, at least on the, the first floor, so I would, I would factor that into your cost and maybe let Trip know that there, there's going to have to be some adjustment made, because you, you may not even be using this main entrance anymore, so.
For securing, for securing the building, I'd feel safer if we just let that be a ceremonial staircase or whatever in closing off, because I have, my greatest fear is that we sit up here at night, and, and doors open downstairs and nobody's there to monitor it, so I'd rather have it sealed off, people could come into an entrance and.
You're in good hands over here, Larry.
Yeah, I know, I, I can get, I can get behind the desk, thank you, Mayor Bellis, but I can. No, my comment's done.
So, does everybody know what they want to do, I'm going with plan three, three.
Second.
So, so what I would, what I would propose, yes, is, is, um, at this point, if, if everybody's kind of amenable at looking option three, is I will approach, uh, Trip to give me an estimate for, um, some renderings and, uh, floor layout costs, uh, as far as engineering and, and architectural plans, maybe some, to, to a certain percentage completion, and then I can bring that back to you at a next, uh, following, following board meeting, maybe not this next one, but, uh, as soon as I can, uh, to approve, uh, some expenditure regarding those costs.
Okay, who was saying plan three, is that A one oh three?
Uh, no ma'am, I think option three was A.
One oh four.
A one oh five.
One oh four?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so then, then we're going to have a problem with, we're going to have to come up with a solution for parking.
I'm not as concerned about the parking as long as the board is okay with, uh, not extending leases on this particular parking lot here that we currently own.
I'm okay with that. And then, with two elevators, correct?
I would, I would just, I would just wait until the architect makes his, because I don't know the technical questions and answers to that.
I'm pretty sure it's because if we're at the extra office space in the square footage, I mean.
I, I'm going to guess it has something to do with employee loading.
Yeah, exactly.
I think we ought to ask him to throw in the design of a new fire station while he's designing.
Thought y'all were finding somebody who does that already, thought you had the design.
We are off topic.
I know, we are off topic.
So we got a motion or what? Okay, you have a motion, second, and second, is there any discussion on the motion? Uh, seeing none, I'll favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same, the motion carries.
All right, um, our final item of the night, uh, is discussion on stormwater drainage, so I'm going to have Matt and his staff come up, um, I know they have a PowerPoint prepared for you.
Mr. Stevens, I think.
Mayor, can I make a motion, we recess for ten minutes?
Motion second, is there discussion, I'll favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same, motion carries. Do you get back to work?
Yes, sir.
We can get our man, manager there, we'll. Mr. Stevens, if you'll carry on, I have a number three.
Thank you, Mayor, um, at this point, we're going to move on to our stormwater drainage overview report, um, Ms. Montane and Mr. Charles, uh, are here tonight, they're going to provide you some update, obviously we've got some of, uh, our public works staff and Avery of Stormwater, Drew Darrell. Public Works Department as well here to answer any other kind of detailed questions, but this time I'm going to turn it over to Matt to do his presentation.
Evening, Mayor, members of the board, uh, what I'd like to do is just, uh, kind of give you a brief overview of the stormwater division, kind of, uh, what our functions are, what we are doing on a day-to-day basis, what we've done here in the past last couple of years since we've incorporated stormwater division, and then, uh, kind of open it up for any discussion we have, uh, moving forward. Uh, so just a quick overview of the functions of the stormwater division, uh, stormwater maintains the existing stormwater system, which is, exists of approximately four hundred, uh, catch basins, drop inlet, and stormwater, uh, infrastructures, we also maintain about fifty-five miles of storm drain piping, and that's piping underneath the road that's not visible from the surface, and then we also maintain, uh, approximately eighty miles of drainage asphalt ditches, some are major ditches like the Dutchfield canal, other than, uh, others are minor ditches, uh, along street railways. Um, we respond to public comments and concerns, we handle any minor repairs that pop up or get reported to the Public Works Department, and we also handle any major repairs that get reported on a day-to-day basis. Uh, along with the day-to-day functions, we also manage the stormwater permitting program and managing the north, new silver rules for the city of New Bern, uh, we manage and coordinate permits and approvals, we perform as-built inspections for new constructions for both residential and commercial properties, we provide public education, investigate illegal discharge, and also perform annual reporting to the state. Uh, we do this with our current stormwater staff, currently in the stormwater division, we have seven employees, we have a stormwater superintendent, which is Mr. Avery Smith, who's here tonight with us, and under him, he has five employees that work with him doing maintenance on a day-to-day basis. We also use the, the likes of inmate labor, we tend to have one to three inmates per day working for the stormwater division, uh, kind of depends on how many we get from the prison on any certain day, but usually it's on the average two employees per day, and then we also budget for one temporary employee for about six months throughout the budget year. Um, stormwater maintenance division, back in two thousand twelve when we started the stormwater division, we put together a levels of service, and that was a document that was put together for what service the stormwater division would provide, what level of service, and I, I've put this together, but I've highlighted several sections of it, just to, just to note that the main function of the stormwater division and our maintenance program was to remove vegetation, sediment, and debris that restricted the flow of water, that was the main purpose of the department, of the division, was to reduce or make sure that anything that was reducing the flow of water was removed from the drainage ways. Um, and, and the reason we, we kind of limited it to that was because of the ordinance that is currently in place and has always been in place, which is ordinance section fifteen five thirty-nine of the city ordinance. Uh, that ordinance actually requires that any person that owns property or leases property within the city, that they are required to maintain that part of the waterway that runs across their property, they're required to make sure that ditch or that drainage way is free of trash, debris, and any excess vegetation that might obstruct the waterway.
Can I ask a question at this point, is, how much would you estimate of all the ditches that we have run through private property, because it seems like, and I, I think Alderman Best, you probably experienced this more than anybody with that area there, that a lot of the ditches are running through private property, yet the people are calling the city.
Correct, a, a more, majority of them run through private property, but that is part of our drainage outlet system that we do maintain, it receives water, and I'll get to this here very shortly here, it receives water from the city right away, then we will maintain it, so even though it runs across private property, we do maintain it.
But is there a way to, I don't know, designate it, that if you got a purple flag or a green flag or something, because I think that's a lot of confusion.
Well, I, I will tell you this.
People not understanding what, what is the city's and what responsibility and what is not.
The city owns no, no property along the drainage way unless it's in the public right away along the streets, anything that runs behind property, along sides of property, it's actually falls on residential, commercial property.
So then they are required to take care of it?
Technically, according to our ordinance, they're responsible for making sure that drainage way is free from the debris.
I think that's a lot of the, the confusion based on speaking to people and whatever, and, and maybe we just need to think of a better way to let people know what is our responsibility and what isn't our responsibility, unless we change the ordinance now.
Sure, and, and that is why, that is why the levels of service that we've performed and been performing since two thousand twelve has been kind of limited to making sure that if something restricts the flow of water, we address that issue, you know, we, we weren't there to manicure ditches, to weed everybody's backyard, it was there to maintain the flow of water. Jump into things we don't maintain real quick, we don't maintain drainage that's on private property, swells, catch basins, anything like that, if you think of, say, the Walmart parking lot that's got a drainage system, we don't maintain those systems, if it is a drainage system along private property that does not receive flow from the city property or city right away, we don't maintain that, a lot of times that falls on backyard drainage ditches, um, and we don't maintain private stormwater BNP's that are permitted through the state of North Carolina or through the city's stormwater permitting process. And just a quick example of what those are, uh, stormwater ponds are pretty common throughout the, uh, city on commercial properties, as well as, uh, stormwater BNP's, those are typically on private commercial properties or residential subdivisions that are maintained by them.
Can you tell us what a BMP is, sorry?
It actually stands for best management practice, which is kind of, kind of an odd term.
Hate to ask that stupid question, but.
Long story short, it's a stormwater facility.
Stormwater, a BMP is a stormwater?
Yeah, stormwater pond, stormwater retention pond, uh, drainage swell, those type things.
So, so let me ask you a question, uh, so you're saying that the city does not maintain, I'm going to say, I guess it's a retention pond or over on, uh, East Rose Street, by the railroad tracks?
No, we do, we do have ones, we have a couple stormwater ponds that fall on city property, uh, matter of fact, there's one on the public works facilities, there's one at the police, uh, fire, uh, police headquarters building, there's a stormwater pond, there's one over Bill Street, which happens to be a city-owned one, we do own to them, but the ones that fall on commercial properties, the one behind Target, the one behind Walmart, the one out front of your doctor's office, we do not maintain those.
So the one on East Rose is city property?
Uh, the, at the stormwater pumps, yes ma'am.
This is the one that's just, uh, it's, as you go around the corner, like you're going, it's over in your area, um?
It's the Bill Street.
The Bill Street Pond, yes, that, that is the city drainage system, yes. And then the last thing we don't maintain, as I mentioned before, is we don't maintain stormwater runoff that transport private properties runoff, uh, in other words, if no city property drains through it, or the city right away does not drain through it, we technically do not maintain it, and I'll give you just a brief example, since this has been a, a pretty hot topic, the map on the screen shows North Second Avenue, North First Avenue, and parts of Atmore Drive, if you'll see all of North First Avenue drains out to the city right away, it's in red, we maintain every bit of that, if you look at North First Avenue, it drains off the street to a drainage ditch behind the houses on North First Avenue or North Second Avenue, and then it picks up drainage from Atmore and Tuscan Lane, we maintain that.
Could you point that, um, can you please go and?
Yeah, I mean, can you like today, Mark?
Point that, um, that what you're saying, what is city, I would appreciate it, please.
You got a big map of it? All right, so what you've got here is, I'll try to talk loud since we don't have a microphone, this is North First Avenue, everything on North First Avenue drains to a drainage ditch along North First Avenue, it collects water from the city right away, so we maintain that ditch, that is a ditch that we will maintain, uh, this ditch, this is North Second Avenue here, all of the water off of North Second Avenue drains through a drainage, uh, system that comes back here and then runs behind these lots, and in doing so, it also picks up water from Tuscan Lane and Atmore back into that same ditch, so we will maintain this ditch, picks up water off the city right away, we maintain it, what we don't maintain is ditches that don't pick up water off of city right away or city property, and a good example in that same neighborhood is this one right here, it runs actually behind the mini store building, the U-Haul place, and some of the houses along Tuscan and Atmore.
Is that the Mets comment?
Yes, ma'am, the back of those properties all drain to a ditch, and then they drain out to South, or North Glimmer River, that is a private drainage system, it receives no water from city right away, it receives no water from city property, so technically we do not maintain that.
So it's up to the property owner, i- if it's behind their house, it's up to them to care, keep it clean?
Technically, yes.
What about the one back on North, I think it's Glimberia Gardens, that goes back to the waste treatment, is it the waste?
That's, it, it's this one right here, all, all the, all the ditch here in red runs there, and then runs back by down by the dog park, we will maintain that because it receives water from the city right away.
Ms. Montane, wouldn't it be a violation of the clean water for the city to go in and, um, in any way usurp the, uh, water quality agreement when a particular given twenty-four year event storm system is built, that if, if we go in there and alter it, you know, that, yeah, all that water has got to go into a. a given twenty-four, twenty-five-year storm event retention pond, primary and secondary. If we go in there just to, to help the situation, we ourselves could be not compliant with clean water requirements. Do you run into that situation sometimes?
Yeah, I think if I, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm going the right direction, if we alter or do away with a drainage system that's currently in place, that's not...
That was state-approved through a level of civil engineer and was designed, just in case Craven West, when they designed their twenty-five-year storm retention ponds and, you know, it gets built, five years later, a given neighborhood is complaining about the drainage. If we go in there and just dig a big ditch and go out to something that's, you know, been in New Bern for fifty years, then we're going to be not compliant with the work quality requirements.
Yeah, I think the big, I think the biggest thing where you'd be non-compliant is there was an existing ditch or existing drainage way that was cut off or closed off or filled in for no reason or for a reason where the water wasn't rerouted and permitted correctly. So that would be the main reason you'd be in violation of something like that. But the point of this is just to kind of illustrate kind of what we do and what we don't maintain. We get, we, from time to time, we get a lot of complaints, and someone says, hey, there's a ditch in my backyard that doesn't drain, or it's holding water. And it's kind of hard when we explain it to them that, hey, it's a private property issue because it doesn't accept, you know, there's, there's no city property that drains through it.
Matt, can you clarify? So Tuscan Lane and Atmore Drive, you're saying all of that water off of those streets flow to the red line?
Green line.
There, there, no, there are three catch basins at this intersection right here. It receives all the water. Once it drains into that catch basin, it drains out to this red line, and then goes over to the big ditch over by the dog park, by Glimmer and Bernie Park.
I just wanted to be clear, because when somebody looks at it, they're going to say, well, you know, Atmore Drive, are you saying that all the water runs, you know, I don't know what direction it is, south or what have you, but Tuscan, where is that going? So you're saying it's going to a catch basin underground?
Everything, and believe me, we looked at this twice yesterday, everything at Atmore and Tuscan runs to the catch basin, it's where those two streets intersect. That's correct.
But behind them is where they're complaining about the flooding, and that's private. Is that correct? That's where I'm confused.
The green line is private, that is correct.
That's private, yes.
Yes, ma'am, sorry. So just a quick little run-through of where we've been. We originally created the stormwater utility in 2012. We kept that utility through 2019. With that stormwater utility, we generated $665,000 as our annual budget through a $2.10 per ERU fee that was charged. As you are aware, in 2020, through the budget process, we eliminated the stormwater utility, and we replaced that with a 2.22 cent tax increase, and we made the stormwater division part of the general fund. Along with that, we took the debt associated with the Jack Smith Creek wetlands, and we transferred that into the stormwater fund. I believe it was with Parks and Rec? Nope. It was within the Streets Department, and we transferred it over to the stormwater division.
About seventy-five thousand a year?
A hundred and ninety-four thousand. So where do we sit for FY20? FY20 currently has a total budget of $892,801, and $194,000 of that is associated with the debt for the Jack Smith Creek wetlands. That leaves you a net budget of $698,801, which is $33,000 more than what it was for FY19. So essentially, by moving it from a stormwater fund into the general fund, we're able to increase that budget by about $33,000.
Let me ask you a question earlier. You said that part of your department does as-built inspections?
Correct.
And do you not sometimes allow the engineer who designed a given project number to do their own compliance inspection?
The, the engineer who does it has to submit a compliance inspection to the city. And then before we will issue the certificate of occupancy, we actually do an as-built inspection ourselves as well. Yes.
Okay, so in other words, you're, what I just mentioned is compliance, and what you're mentioning is, is when it's built, the as-built inspection?
Yes, yes, sir. So the FY20 budget has a annual budget of $698,000. The first pie chart you see here on the left kind of illustrates where, how that budget is spent. Three hundred and sixty-two thousand of it goes to personnel. Two hundred and eighty-nine thousand of it goes to debt services, which a hundred and ninety-four thousand of that being for the wetlands property. And then two hundred and forty thousand, which is about 27% of the budget, goes to the operating expenses of the division.
Looking at that, is there any way you could bring the personnel costs down and operate costs up that would create more efficiency by having more mechanization and less boots on the ground?
I, I will tell you, in my opinion, I think we need more boots on the ground to accomplish the work that needs to be done. So, so $240,000 of it is our operating cost. So I've taken that operating cost and I've broken that out for you, just to kind of show you, see how we're spending it. And ninety thousand of it is spent in stormwater projects, kind of infrastructure projects that we, we see that need to be taken care of. We spend about $76,000 on supplies and material. That's for stuff that Avery and his staff may need, whether it's a, a catch basin that's being replaced, or a piece of pipe, or weed eaters, or shovels, or anything of that nature. We spend about $31,000 over at City Garage for fuel and maintenance to the city vehicles and city equipment. And then we spend $42,000 on kind of all the other things, whether it's the temporary help, or whether it's utilities for the stormwater pumps, or, or, you know, professional services for a project or a, a permit review. We spend about $41,000. So, you know, long story short, of the, of the budget, that's eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, we get about $90,000 in stormwater improvements, and we get about $76,000 of supplies and materials for staff to do their job. So I just, real quick, wanted to, as we, as we've shown, I'm not going to go through these next couple slides in detail, I'm just going to go through them very quickly. Through the, through the budget, through FY12 and F, through FY17, we budgeted about $60,000 for improvement projects. It was a limited budget, allowed us to do small infrastructure projects. So this slide here kind of illustrates the projects that we did through FY12, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen over a six-year period. We did roughly $350,000 worth of infrastructure projects, which runs about $60,000 per year for those six years. Jumping over to FY18, this is the year that the board allocated 1.5 million dollars to start going to a project fund for stormwater improvement projects. So if, if you have this presentation in front of you, the items that are in black are ones that we actually did through the stormwater budget. We did about $60,000 that year through the stormwater budget. And then the items listed in red, which are Cardinal Drive, Cedar and West, and the Neuse Boulevard Outfall, those are the ones that we actually funded through the 1.5 million dollar allocation for stormwater projects. So in FY18, we did nearly $270,000 worth of stormwater improvement projects. Jumping over to FY19, we actually had three different categories. We had several projects that we did that were repairs as a result of Hurricane Florence. Included the, the Neuse Avenue repair where the road collapsed at the storm drain location. We had repairs to the wetlands berm. We also did three drainage improvement projects through the budget. That was funded about $60,000. We did one on North First Avenue, we did one on Goldsboro Street, and we did a small project over on Coriander Drive as well. And then we also did about, quick count, eight or nine projects that were paid for through the 1.5 million dollars that was funded as stormwater infrastructure projects. So that was all of FY19. We did a total of $967,000 worth of projects in FY19. And then as we get over here to FY20, I've got a list of projects that we are currently working on for FY20, some which will come out of the budgeted dollars for this year, and several that will come out of the 1.5 million dollars that was allocated. I will say that most, once we complete most of these projects, that will almost take up all of the 1.5 that was allocated two years ago. Just real quick, small little project over on Lower Lane where we installed a storm drain pipe. That pipe's been, that project has been completed. We're looking, working on a couple drainage studies for Elizabeth Avenue and Jefferson and Tryon. And then we're also getting ready to start a project over on Princeton and Harvard, Jarvis Street, and McCarthy Boulevard as well. So all in all, once we're done for FY, since FY July of 2012 through this budget here, we'll have done a little over $2 million worth of the infrastructure improvement projects. So that's, that's half of, that's half of the department. The other half is the routine maintenance is done by staff.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Over for, please. I didn't see in here where you've got any improvements scheduled for the Elks Road. I mean, there, there's numerous streets over there, when it rains, just a hard rain, there's water standing on the streets. And I contacted, I think, I sent you a picture, Mr. Smith, about an area over there that needs some attention. So I don't know if that's something that...
That'll be more of a in-house, what we call our ditch mucking crew. They'll go out there and they'll do some work. I'll have a couple pictures later, kind of show the work they do, but we'll handle that through routine maintenance with our staff. So we've kind of broken our staff up into four different categories. The first one is a, a group that does nothing but maintain pipe outlets and catch basins. That crew consists of one staff member, one person through the NC Works program, and two inmates. We also have a crew that we call our ditch and, our cut and clean crew. They basically, you know, work on stormwater ditches, basically weeding ditches, cleaning ditches, just kind of making sure the water can flow through there without any unnecessary obstructions. If I get a phone call about a ditch is full of debris, these are the crews that we're going to call to take care of that. And we have two crews, they both have one staff member and one person through the NC Works program. And then we also have a crew that we call our hard infrastructure and maintenance crew. They also handle pump stations, they maintain our pump stations, they also do, you know, herbicide spraying and pest control for beaver trapping. Any kind of minor repair that we get, whether it's a catch basin grate that's been broke or needs to be fixed, these two guys are the guys that kind of, they kind of run on a day-to-day basis, you know, when we get a lot of the service calls. And then the last group we got is our ditch mucking crew. And this is one staff and one temporary employee who will actually drive the dump truck. And they spend their days, one of them on a excavator or mini excavator, and the other one in a dump truck, mucking out ditches along city rightaways. So just to give you a quick little example of each of them. This is a before and after photo of a couple of the catch basins and pipe inlets that have been cleaned by the pipe inlet crew. This is a couple drainage ditches that have been cleared out through our cut and clean team. And bottom picture is a pretty good example of them just going through the ditch and removing the high vegetation so the water can flow. Couple pictures of our crew doing some minor repairs to catch basins or storm drain pipes. We also maintain the pumps at the wetlands. And then the bottom right picture is a beaver dam that was removed over at the wetlands as well. So we do some trapping of beavers and dam removal as well. And the last picture is a couple pictures of our crew that actually does some ditch mucking out, basically driving the backhoe and the mini excavator around the right way and, and mucking out some of those, some of those high spots. Alderman Best, these are the guys that were actually on Hays Avenue, you know, last week, mucking out that area that you, I, and the mayor went and took a look at. So just kind of small, but I'll read them, just some goals and a summary from, from what we, what we find when we go through this presentation, that we are, through our annual maintenance program, we're, we're cleaning ditches with the staff that we have. We feel that we can cover about half of the city's eighty miles of ditches, but it would be maintained to the level of service documented so that water is flowing. When I say we, we, we visit each one of those or we maintain, it might involve staff just walking the ditch, clearing out anything that's blocking the flow of water, and that's all that gets taken care of. It's not mucking out, it's not doing any heavy digging in there, it's maintaining the flow of water. So with that level of service, we can probably maintain about half of eighty miles of ditches per year. To actually service all eighty miles and, and kind of do it to the level of service, you'd probably need staff that's more staff. Alderman Kinsey came and saw me about a month ago, and talked about how much staff it would take to, to visit all eighty miles of ditches every year. And, and you're probably looking at twice as many employees if you got twice as much staff as you got to, to efficiently do what you want to do. The other thing I do want to point out is a audit for compliance with the MS4 program. About three years ago, when Amanda was here, we actually received our Phase Two stormwater permit through the state of North Carolina. With that permit, we're required to do certain things, to be compliant. And, and next fiscal year, we are due to have an audit for the state of North Carolina. That's, that's, that's a big thing in the stormwater world. I know they just did one in several cities in the northern part of the state. And I won't say the state because I can't verify this is the one, but there was a city that was fined $100,000 for not complying with all aspects of the stormwater permit. So we're due, we're due to get that audit sometime in the next year. What, what I would recommend and, and like to do is I would like to consult with a private engineering firm to come in and do a pre-audit of our stormwater division. I think there are probably many areas that they're going to say, hey, you need to do this, or you need to improve in this before your audit comes next year. So I would, I would suggest and recommend that we get a consultant firm to come in there and do that audit so that we make sure that we're compliant.
What company is that, do you know?
I, I've reached out, we actually met with an engineering firm out of Raleigh, Riven's and Rattinale.
Where is Rattinale? They're actually coming tomorrow?
They're coming back tomorrow to fine-tune our request, but I think at the end of the day, we'd be in the 15,000 to 20,000 dollar range. And what they would do is they would come down and do a complete audit of our stormwater division, they'd be down here for a week, collecting data, talking to staff, visiting site locations. They would go back and they'd take all that information, they'd put it into an auto report, and then they would come back and do a presentation to the board of what their findings are and what we need to do before we actually have our audit. And then the last thing that I would recommend, and I've kind of mentioned it to Mark once as, once before, is that, you know, they used to have it here in the city a long time ago, is that we would recommend putting together some type of stormwater advisory committee. That would include, you know, two or three staff members, two or three Board of Alderman members, and a couple people from the public, just to kind of on a monthly basis to review stormwater projects, stormwater budgets, what staff's doing, what the board sees need to be done, and, and things that the residents see. And, and I think that's kind of a better way to communicate, you know, what we do, what we don't do, and why we're doing some of the things we do. So that would be my final recommendation as far as our summaries and goals. So with that, I will open it up to questions or discussions on...
Let me ask you a big question. What, what policy does Board of Alderman have in place that, or has had in place in the past that we need to rescind or improve on that will help with the future drainage in New Bern? Now, I'll give you an example. I know that in some areas where we have some problems, the past city policy has allowed anybody, if they buy the pipe, then the city will install it a lot of times. And then up the road, you know, we have a drainage problem because things stopped up and there's not enough clean outs and things like that. So are you continuing to allow that, or when you see problematic areas where, you know, the, the thing is, is it easier to clean the ditch, or is it easier to have to get the sewer jet and do it that way?
I, I'll tell you, the, when I came to Public Works, that was kind of the thing that we did. I think it predated Mark. If, if somebody bought the pipe and they wanted to ditch in their property pipe, if they bought it, we would install it. I don't know if we did any when Mark was the Public Works Director, but when it came to me, I think we had two requests early on that we took care of back in 2012, and it was shortly after that that we did away with that program. We don't do that. Obviously, a ditch holds more water than a pipe. There's a reason why the ditches are there. So we have, we, we don't allow that anymore, we don't do that anymore. So that was kind of a practice that was put in place years ago.
So like on Trent Road in back Harris Theater where aesthetically, you know, you could have piped that, that's, that's open ditch, is that, is that an example of what you're talking about?
If, if, honestly, it's contractor come and he would have asked to do that, we probably would not have allowed that.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about behind Harris Theater where it's, it's open ditch and not pipe.
And if they wanted to pipe it, we would not have allowed it. If, you know, if you've got a ditch that runs across your front yard or your backyard and you want to pipe that, and you, you asked us to, to do that if you bought the pipe, we would not do that.
Board, you got questions? I know, I know the board, and of course, we're all over New Bern and, you know, looking at things, and so many times residents have concerns, and the fact is, is without being able to have a shot, an elevation shot, we literally, you know, if you can't see the river, you don't know how low you actually are in some of these areas. And there's limitations because of the, the topography of the land is what we can do. And, uh, there's limitations because of the, the topography of the land as to what we can do.
Now, and, and the only thing I'll add to that, to your, your question earlier is I think the biggest misconception with the public is we get a lot of phone calls that it's, hey, the city's property or the city's stormwater ditch behind my property. You know, the city actually doesn't own any property other than the city rightaway. It's actually, the city has an easement for a drainage way behind your property. It actually runs along your property, uh, but it, it's your property, it's not the city's property. And the ordinance states as the homeowner's responsibility to keep that free of, uh, debris, uh, and vegetation. Now, the city has since two thousand and twelve, we've done, I think, a fairly decent job of kind of going to these areas and making sure the water's flowing. But I think that's probably the biggest misconception.
Do you, do you try to, like, in the case of around the Kidsville area, some of that work can either go back over to Semin Street through Taylor Drive, through Goverse Fields, across seventeen, down to where you're gonna fix the Jefferson Avenue problem? And then back where it used to be the old Palace sixty-six, cross seventeen, and on out to the, to the river? Do you, are you looking for redundancy as far as, um, in that particular case, what I've, I've seen in the last month is, is the, the ditch there by Kidsville seems to hold an inordinate amount of water. So there must be a major blockage somewhere. I know that water, at the Bay River, kind of flows back toward Fox Island and discharges out the old town. So, um...
No, that, the water from the, uh, West New Bern Rec Center drains back by Monterey Circle and crosses underneath seventeen. And then, and then then crosses back over to, uh, Hotel Drive.
Trent Village.
And crosses over Trent Road.
And then I guess that one would go out to Timber.
Yes, yes, sir.
But then there is another lateral that ties it in and, um, but anyway, that's... So, um, I, I just think the main thing that would help the city is the blue line streams if they were operational and maintained that way. A lot of the laterals have kind of worked themselves out somewhat. So again, um, what present policy do we have in place that we, as a board, should look at amending, altering, rescinding, whatever to, for the proper flow of water in New Bern? Is there anything, recommendations you guys have? Mr. Charles, you've been here just a short period of time. I know you have a very, um, empirical, a really contemporous background and, and I know your dad well, so, uh...
You know, I, I, I don't believe there's, unless you can make an ordinance, they'll give us more elevation, you know? We're, we're fighting, we're fighting a historical issue of very little elevation, very little fall across the town. And, um, you know, we're working at it. And, and that's, and that's the thing. And then with the outfalls, we're limited with major outfalls. We've got maybe six major outfalls, all of the water in New Bern. Um, and unless we get those outfalls cleaned out, the work we're doing upstream, what we've seen is it's accelerating water to the outfalls. But we're ending up in places where it's slowing down. Um, it's not so much a culvert issue as we've got to get it to the river and get it out to the river. So it's the headwaters and outfalls that, that are seeming to be, uh, uh, the...
Do you think in the next two, three years, we need to make some additional, um, pumping changes at the Semin Street extension? I know Alderman, Alderman Kinsey and I, we were sat and see Alderman Kinsey during the hurricane and we were all down there. And was, are you satisfied with what's happening there with those pumps? Or do you see, um, an auxiliary electric pump that...
Okay, I'm in Jacksmith, Jacksmith Creek.
Yeah. Currently, currently there's two pumps there that pump twenty-one thousand gallons per minute. And, and I think the, we were down there during the hurricane, uh, during a significant rainfall. And, and I think the misconception on that one is those pumps were designed for, you know, everyday summer rains. It wasn't designed to handle a Hurricane Florence or Hurricane Doreen or Hurricane Michael. So obviously during Hurricane Doreen, I think, uh, you and Alderman Kinsey and Alderman Odom were down there, uh, when I was down there as well. And we had just left the Hazel Avenue area and all the dishes were full to the top. Um, but the pumps were pumping and the water was in the ditch. I think the difference in that, uh, in, in any other storm, the water would have been out of the ditches and underneath the houses. But with the pumps running at least, the ditches were full, but the water was contained to the ditches.
Is there something, a piece of equipment or is there some study to get something different that would react in a, oh, you know, that could react on a daily basis, but also react when we have a heavy flow?
There is, uh, all those pumps are set on floats. There is a small pump that runs on electric, uh, that runs on a daily basis. That basically keeps the everyday water in the drainage ditches, moving out of the ditches and pumping it into the wetlands, and also keeps the water in the wetlands moving. Uh, that's the way it was designed. And then the larger pumps are scheduled to kick on once the storm comes and the water rises.
And talk to me about the Duffy Field Canal, that's always been an issue. Is that just a matter of continuing to, to dredge it or to get the yuck out of it to make it flow?
Just, just, just the opposite. You don't need to dredge it anymore. Uh, the Duffy Field Canal is in the water table. Um, it doesn't matter how much vegetation or how much sediment you take out of there, it's always gonna hold water. You'll never see it dry unless you get into a drought. It is in the water table. So, so dredging it or digging it deeper is the last thing you want to do because then instead of only a foot of water, it's gonna hold three or four foot of water. So the best thing to do is just keep the debris out of there, keeps the pipes open. So when it rains and when the stores, storms, the water can get out of there. But it's always gonna have water in it. Most of your blue line streams throughout the city are always gonna have water in them.
So Matt, what is our, our maintenance policy for is, I know, like you said, a lot of the water came from, from Hurricane Florence. But just on the, on a yearly basis, what is the, the maintenance like for just the city crews going around and walking that eighty, if they can get to it, walking that eighty mile of ditches and see if there is any debris in the ditches that would stop the flow of water or whatever if we did have, you know, heavy rains or, or hurricane?
Well, once we get, once we know, our, our biggest thing is once we get heavy rains and once we know rain's coming, is getting out there and walking the ditches. And right now, we've got the staff that we've got and we're doing, I say, as much as we can do. A lot of this complaint driven, we'll get a call from Alderman or, or one of your constituents and say, hey, look, there's a blockage in the ditch. And we'll run out there and try to take care of it. Um, but it's important also to pass that on, that message on, that it is technically their responsibility according to ordinance. Uh, we do what we can do. Uh, we're very responsive, I feel, as far as when we get a call from, uh, a citizen or a board member. Uh, but there are eighty miles of ditches, forty miles of piping and four thousand catch basins, is, is a lot for five people.
So right now, if you're telling me that, I'll just say, um, in the ditch, in the Duffy Field Canal, okay? If there is some debris in that canal that's blocking that canal, that's the city's responsibility to get it out. That's not the homeowners?
Technically, according to the ordinance, it's the homeowners, but the city's policy, since we have had a stormwater division, is we will go free up that debris.
All right.
We'll go take that out. But we're not gonna go out there and muck it. Technically, we're not gonna weedy the banks of it and make it look pretty and manicure it. We're gonna make sure the water can flow.
Yeah. I'm just saying, for instance, and I'm saying this so that hopefully, you know, that some of the residents, uh, understand. I'm just saying, if, from the hurricane, if there's two or three tires in the ditch, you know, that's not the homeowners' responsibility to get that out of the ditch. It is. You're saying it is, technically.
Technically, yes.
But the city offers that service and goes out and removes that debris.
Yes, but with five people, we're limited. I mean, we're not gonna hit everything every day or once a month.
I was gonna add, I think one of the beneficial things that Matt has done is looking at, um, uh, adjusting staffing levels during off-seasons of paving and sidewalks. This past year, we kind of played around with that. You moved an additional, what, twenty people or fifteen people?
We, we moved a couple over, several of them have had to come back to their departments. I mean, we had one from Leithland, two from Leithland that have had to go back since the storm, stuff like that.
But that's, that's kind of some of the things that he's able to do interchangeably within the different divisions of his department is, is in the off-seasons, uh, when the foliage is off the trees and things like that. And we, we aren't doing sidewalk constructions or repairs because it's too cold or we're, we're not doing paving or whatever. We may take certain crew allocations and, and put them towards stormwater repairs and maintenance and things like that. And I think it's helped a lot in the ditches. I, I think you hit on that briefly there too, Matt.
Matt, could you, um, for the benefit of those watching and myself included, so I can refer back to this the next time I get a call, can you explain the old Food Line parking lot on MLK, on why that floods all the time and why it's not the city's responsibility?
Yeah, the, the old Food Line parking lot, we've been dealing with this issue since two thousand and twelve. Uh, and, and a big part of it is, is the drainage ditch that runs behind the Food Line and the City Trend building. Needs to be cleaned out, that would help. Um, the reason it's not the city's responsibility is because it receives water from the state rightaway and from private commercial property. It does not receive any water from a city rightaway or any city property, so therefore we don't maintain it.
So the last storm I rode through there, Red Robin Lane, water was flowing great. The pipes were not at capacity, they still had more capability to handle more. So we're responsible, correct me if I'm wrong, for the new elliptical under Trent Road, correct?
Correct.
And if that's not full and there's no blockages along the way on Red Robin, then the problem lies on private property with the City Trends, Old Food Line.
The only other pipe you would look at would be the one that crosses underneath Red Robin, once it leaves the shopping center. But I believe the last time we had a large storm, that pipe was not full either.
Yeah, it wasn't. Okay. Thank you.
And, you know, just the other thing that compels that a little bit is a great issue, I mean, it's flat.
So, Mr. Montagn, what will it take from you or this board? I, I'm all in favor of starting a stormwater maintenance advisory committee. Because this way, this committee can meet with the general public and we can discuss progress as we go.
I think what it, what it really is, is a chance for staff to have a, can, a committee with a couple board members and a couple staff and a couple, maybe a couple people from the public. I know somebody from Greenbrier. He manages or oversees all of the storm drains in Greenbrier and Kings Row. And he's very active in stormwater. He'd be a great person to kind of be involved in it. Um, Alderman Odom knows his name.
Yeah.
Um, but you, you've got a couple constituents like that. And, and what that does, what that was, it, it lets a handful of the public know what's going on. It lets the board know what's going on. That way, if Alderman Kinsey's got a question, it's just as easy for him to ask you or, or give an update at the board meeting of what's going on. Just lets everybody knows what's going on, it keeps everybody up to date. I think if, uh, I think it's something we want to put together. I don't know if it needs to be a formal committee or a formal board, if we just do it, I don't know. Um, I guess we got us for the manager of the attorney on that, but, uh, it's certainly something.
Attorney doesn't like formals.
I'm kind of over the, over the committee.
I kind of like the informal group that sits around the conference table once a month and just kind of discusses stormwater stuff.
I think you're kind of maybe talking about a committee like, we had some sewer issues a while back and...
A working group. A working group, that's it, a working group, stormwater working group.
One of the questions is, the board have a drainage issue?
How are we doing on Spencer Avenue? So I had a couple of calls, but I think what happened was because of leaves and debris, it got into those, um, catch basins or I guess whatever you call them there and it blocked it up. So water was pounding and then because of the pavement, water is pounding, so...
I'm gonna give you an update, but I'm actually gonna let George do that. Georgia, George and Darrell Nelson, our street superintendent, are out there on a daily basis with the contractor. They had a long meeting, uh, this morning with the contractor.
South side is doing much better.
So, uh, I'll let him give you an update on both the north side and the south side.
Okay.
The, currently, they are working to finish the milling on one side right now, the unpaved section. Um, we anticipate this being completed probably end of the week and paving to start at the first of next week. There may be two blocks, um, that they get to pave tomorrow that are prepared. But what they're actually doing is they're removing an inch and a half of material. Then they're milling in place, which basically gives us a new subgrade that they can grade. They're doing that and then they'll prepare it for us to pa- I mean, prepare for pavement. We're anticipating this probably happening, hopefully, first of the week. We had walked the entire street today and identified several sections that are on the contractor's punch list to go back and address where there's some standing water. Um, there's a manhole that's a little too high that needs to be readjusted and dropped down that they're aware of. And if you drive that street, you'll be able to see the white paint marks that are up and down that lane that we've identified. Um, they need to be addressed.
Do you want maybe putting some of that information so I can ask them to the residents? I think, you know, if we could send an email out through their, um, general email, it would be helpful because I'm getting several questions and concerns.
And, and with, and along with that, the drainage and, and Avery Smith and I have talked about this and Darrell Nelson, that once they complete the milling and the paving on that job and the repairs are complete, we're gonna take the back truck back and clean the actual catch basin boxes out because obviously you're gonna have sediment and, and milling debris that have gone into the pipes and the boxes. So we're gonna go back and address that. But we don't, we're not planning to do that until they're completely off of Spencer. So we know it's a one-time shot, we get all the millings out and, and go from there with just regular maintenance after that point.
Thank you.
Well, uh, Mr. Charles, Mr. Montagn, I'm no rocket scientist, but it comes, it's drainage, pipes and coverts and all that, but I only done that to you experts. But what, what determines the size of pipe that is needed for a particular area so that the water can free flow lead?
A washout like he had over there.
Yeah, I mean, what determines that because...
Well, you, you've got, you've got several things. Uh, you've got upstream volume of water coming by. That, that's really gonna be your dictating sizing of it. Unfortunately, you, you know, there should be some forethought into future development upstream of you if that's the situation, that, that you're not just anticipating flow from existing outfalls or existing built upon areas that go into the strange drainage ditch that you're gonna go over again. But a li- a little bit of forethought as into what may come upstream. But that, that's not always possible, you know? We don't always know what's coming ahead of us, um, to, to size these pipes.
Okay. Take from what you just said now, so how, so that order comes from development services?
It, it, it comes usually on site plans. It comes, engineers provide the, the flow.
To development services?
Yes.
And then they have a, they have a, a, a particular, um, I, I would say scaling piping that is needed for particular jobs?
We have minimum sizes and then the engineers, um, calculate for their particular site what sizes they, they need.
In, in short, our ordinance requires that they design a site to a twenty-five-year storm. So once they run the calculations with the amount of water, the amount of flow coming off of that site, it'll dictate whether that's a twenty-four inch pipe or a thirty-six inch pipe based on the amount of impervious, uh, coverage written to that.
Well, I know a while back, the mayor was real, was a, a, a heavy topic about infrastructure piping here in the city. And that's the reason why we had so much problem with water flow and all of that. So I was just wondering, was, was that something that has been upscaled now for its dimension and size of the piping?
The ordinance still is a twenty-five-year storm.
So is that something that we as a board need to...
Well, you know, then, uh, that number forty-two, forty-three right there, that water, uh, that's what I would call it, meanders over to Norwich and hits kind of to the left. And then it pipes out and goes in the Greenbrier. And then meanders back there in the Pecos and, and comes back and goes back to the Jimmy's Creek and then goes out, you know, to the almost washout Jimmy's Creek, Yarmouth.
Correct.
And then finally goes out to the river. And, you know, a lot of times this city, uh, a lot of what happened is old farmer's ditches that, you know, a developer went in and worked with the existing, either natural blue line or a old farmer's ditch. And it was just cheaper to go that route. And so all around New Bern, you know, we are stuck with these, these as builds, you know?
Inadequate.
You know, and so to that, um, I'll give Dan Menos, uh, you know, a plus on, uh, the way that we worked at Princeton Hardware to get some of that work helped out was, uh, Dan put two tandem two-foot, um, tandems, I don't know if you remember that, under Norwich, under Norwich at Thorpe Abbott. Because that guy on the corner, he almost got water in his house.
Yeah, we did that.
You remember that?
Yep.
So we got on him all over and sometimes you can fix it with those two tandems we put in, which you couldn't put anything any bigger than a two-foot without putting a hump in the road. Um, and it's just, you know, you look at them situations up there and some of them are not that old. Charlie's got two, three of them in his area. And it's just, uh, you know, existing contour or somebody that saved a developer fifty thousand dollars with the design that put it, put it on us later because it got run through and approved. It was approved through the plan department and so here we are stuck paying for it. There's quite a few other examples, but...
So what's, what's the remedy for this? We need to... So what's, what's the remedy for this? We need to, we just don't need to give them talk about it?
Help, help all see that in a given area, if, if, um, if, if something is designed for a two-foot culvert and we know that without a, a grate on it and first storm and three limbs come down there and clog it and then it's reduced down to a twelve-inch culvert because of the friction of water that the, you have either a tandem, a set one beside or you oversize the pipe.
So that starts with the developer?
It starts with this board and their policy.
With the developer, when they're trying to implement a certain type of pipe, if we, the city.
If I was a developer, if, if I was a developer, I would put the minimal pipe I had put in for my bottom line.
Developers are gonna build to whatever your standards are because that is their minimum cost requirement. Wha- what the mayor is mentioning here is that if the board chooses that they want to do something differently, one, you can put it on the developers. Two, you can fund it through Matt's stormwater department to look at particular pipes as development occurs and upsize those pipes as needed. Those are the two options you have. Or leave it as a minimum design. So taking for instance, Matt's example of the twenty-four inch pipe. If the twenty-four inch pipe is what meets the twenty-five year storm requirement based on what our ordinance is, you either, one, change it to a fifty-year storm event, which obviously puts more requirements and more expense on the developer. Or two, we would upsize that line to meet a certain storm requirement that the board so chooses sets. And then we would actually have some money set aside to upsize lines beyond the twenty-five year storm. Those are the options you have.
Uh, another problem we have is that, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the developer is allowed to be the compliance inspector through his engineer he hired to design that system. And this, and this is why I asked you earlier, you said you do as-built. It's not known as built as a, isn't as-built. It's after the fact, something go back ten years later, know where the system is in place. But, um, when, uh, City New Bern is allowing compliance to be done by non-city staff and it's done by the actual fox in the hen house, um, engineer that designed the system is doing the compliance inspection. Then you're stuck if that thing fails. And, you know, I, that's probably a policy way before your town. But it, it, and that's why I was asking you, are there some things that the City of New Bern wants to do different?
But didn't, didn't you say that before we accept it and give a CO that staff inspection?
What we will do is we will do an as-built inspection on the stormwater facility, the pond, the BNP. We will go and before we accept the streets, kind of inspect, catch basin for infiltration. But we do not have an onsite inspector that is watching that pipe be put in the ground during construction.
Right.
You rely on the engineer who's probably goes out there on a part-time basis, once or twice a week. To be honest with you, we should have a full-time inspector so that when, I use Blue Water Rise as an example because it's being built right now, as they're putting in all the storm drainers, that we have somebody out there watching it. Make sure it's installed properly. Because once they build it and once they pave it and once we accept the street, if it wasn't installed properly, we have to make, we have to take over the responsibility of repairing that. And a good example is, um, Harley Farms.
What's wrong with?
Bryce's Crossing, I'm sorry. We've talked about that several times. And there's several areas in Bryce's Crossing where we've got some failing pipes.
What, what's wrong with the possibility of doing what the mayor was saying in regards to, well, you were saying, um, the policy, you know, if we can take it from twenty-five year and do it to fifty and then, you know, look into getting someone here for, uh, to do in, in inspections. Um, you're killing two birds with one stone because then we're making a stronger policy and then we're overseeing that the policy is being, um, you know, they're doing what they're supposed to.
I think the upsizing of the pipe or whether you make the policy a fifty-year storm or you put that on the, on the backs of the stormwater division, I think that's just a policy issue. It's just something that, that the board's gotta make the decision on, uh, if they want to make the pipe larger for new, for new construction.
For a new construction, but I want it on the cost of the developer, not us.
Well, I would also, my, my recommendation to the board is, is if you're entertaining this, that, uh, this be looked at through kind of a study. Because one thing you're looking at here is what is the cost burden that you're putting on developers? Cause what you, the last thing you want to do is discourage economic development within your city by putting additional cost burdens on them. However, um, you want to weigh that cost benefit scenario and determine, you know, what is that design year storm you may want to upsize to or whatever it may be. Uh, let me tell you something. I mean, if you got a developer that comes in and puts a seventy-two inch pipe in somewhere, which elevation around here typically doesn't allow, but let's take Yarmouth. Yarmouth is a pretty good example. That's what, sixty's? Deal, deal sixty's? Deal sixty's? Well, you upsizeing that to, um, deal one-twenty's to be able to meet the, the storm requirement for a fifty-year storm on that is gonna be a pretty significant number. So, um, if, if the city's gonna take that on or the developer, if you're gonna pass on to a developer, then that's something that the city has a, as a.
Well, I was never recommending, I was saying, you know, the labor's not that much different. And, um, you know, I would think the city would pick up the difference between what the, you know, I mean, industry-wise, wide around North Carolina's twenty-five year event. But you say in the last five years, I'd, I'd like to sit here and think about how many hundred-year events we've had. Ninety-year events. And we've had a lot of them and we're gonna have a lot more. But you were saying something on here? Actually, go ahead.
No, you sure? I was just, I think I lost my train of thought. What you were saying, I just think that, um, I think it would be a good idea because we've had this conversation at, you know, numerous times. And we've experienced the hurricane, we have the issues, we're trying to get funding, you know, to kind of alleviate something that I feel like, why not do a study to figure out, you know, the best option to make sure that moving forward, you know, we're protecting our citizens and we're protecting our city in regards to, you know, expenses. And then we're also, you know, figuring out for developers coming in. And I, and I really do think it would be a great idea, it is necessary to have, you know, create that position for an inspector to be on site to, you know, oversee.
I, I agree. I think when I was talking to Matt before and when we had that meeting with Blue Water Rise, you know, I requested or asked if we could have an inspector on site. And of course, we, we just don't have the funding or have the person to do it. But there's two or three examples, not only in Bryce's Crossing, but in a couple of other subdivisions where we've had failures as a result of poorly installed pipes. I also think that if you require putting in the dual pipes, that you're gonna probably have a uproar from the development community, the developers. I mean, my God, look what happened when we tried to get wider culsacks. So, uh, I think overall it's the best interest of the city is if we feel that a dual pipe is needed, that we provide the pipe and ask the developer to put it in as he's putting his in. I mean, what is it, digging a hole a little bit wider really? Is that, is there more to it than that?
It's, it's a labor cost and I mean, there might be some stone costs and some of that.
You know, maybe we have to provide some of that material as well. But I think in the very near future, we really do need to see about finding and hiring an inspector.
I'll make one point. Tonight might not be the place to discuss it, but we actually have a, um, well, I'll say it's a part-time construction inspector. Um, he's a retired gentleman who used to do utility inspections for the water and sewer. He's now back at Public Works. Um, he's informed me that once he hits his two thousand hours this year, which will be in late October, he's going to retire again officially. So that, that is, uh, funds that will, could be available that if we would like to make that a permanent position to hire a full-time inspector, that we could do it that way.
Well, I certainly, I think it's needed because I would have loved to have an inspector representing the city of New Bern on site during the construction that's taking place at Blue Water Rise.
I agree.
Just because I don't even know who the, the, who the contractor is. If it's the same one that was doing the, the Bryce's Crossing or not, I don't, it may, may or may not be, but, you know.
It's not the same contractor. And actually, our part-time inspector's been out there every morning. He's gone to Blue Water Rise.
I, I think, I think since our meeting, we've made the point that he's, he's headed out that way, you know, a couple of times a week.
Is there no legal recourse if we can prove that the contractors or the developers put in the pipe?
What, once, once we accept the streets, there's technically a, a warranty period after it's ours.
Yeah, not only that, they, they've put a piece of this plastic pipe in the rear property lines and then the homeowners come in and put fences up and drill holes through the pipe and put your fences up.
And, and just to correct that, that is something, a policy with staff that we have, we are not allowing that. If we go through department review and we see backyard piping, Bryce's Crossing is a great example. We have been working with all the local engineers to have them remove it out to the city right away. And to be honest with you, we haven't got any negative feedback from any of the engineers here locally on that, so.
Well, that's good.
I mean, that's, that's happened at Blue Water Rise, Blue Water Rise, uh, the next section of Bell Oaks is getting ready, uh, get started on. And Atlas has done the same thing for us there.
Good. Well, Mano, could, could you walk me through a day in the life of a full-time stormwater inspector?
Um, I don't know if you would call it a, a, just a stormwater inspector.
So, so what would, my question I guess should be, what are they gonna do when they're not inspecting a stormwater install?
I've got two hundred and ninety-three BMPs throughout the city that should be inspected that we are not able to keep up with. So there's, I mean, that's a full-time job in itself almost. There are, I told you, we've got an audit for MS four permanent. One of the things they're gonna look at is, you know, yearly inspections of all the stormwater ponds and the BMPs. So if they're not out at Blue Water Rise or they're not out at Bell Oaks or somewhere else, there's plenty of inspecting they can do on all the stormwater structures throughout the city.
You know, if, if you'll drive through Tawburna, Tawburna Circle, Tawburna Way, in front of every catch basin out there, you've seen with a patch where the cities had to go out there and repair it because the contractor just didn't put it, install it right.
He did not, he did not seal between the top of the storm drain pipe and the casting of the limb. Was not sealed, so therefore everything.
So we, we don't catch that before we accept the street?
It hadn't failed.
It hadn't failed. It's underneath the asphalt.
But there was no inspection done.
And it wasn't inspected at the time of construction.
So, um, in, in regards to that, we have Craven Thirty that we just annexed in. And are, have they already gotten their permits and everything to break ground in regards to building homes? Or are we ahead of the game where if we do get an inspector and we decide to change policy?
They went through the initial design phase already and we did make them move any pipe that they had backyard drainers. We made them move that out to the right away. But I would think for that one, it might be, it might be a little late for the, uh, to make them increase pipe size.
So are you saying that you can absorb the cost of this, uh, full-time inspector? Is that what you just told me?
Um, I haven't run the numbers completely, but it's, it would be close.
Really?
Yeah.
I mean, like, sure, y'all, make, make sure the board.
I'm not, I'm, don't, don't quote me on that, but it's.
I just did.
I mean, I'm doing this, I'm doing this with the elimination of the position that we currently have.
But this person would be able to continue with that position as well as do the, um, pipe inspections?
Yeah, oh yeah. Well, what we would do is now that George is on staff, George handles a lot of the project management, all these projects. George is managing. So we kind of, it's, it's almost like fading out that, the responsibilities of that inspector anyways.
Well, I commend you for being able to work in somebody that can do that. Because that's a, that's something we definitely need. We need somebody from the city to put their eyes on this construction.
So you said it's a possibility that someone would be in here in October?
Uh, I, I, I said the, the current guy we have now, his, his last day will probably be the end of October. If we, if we were to go the route of adding a position, it would have to go in front of the board. The board would have to do a budget amendment that we'd have to hire. So it would balance with probably the first of the year.
If you're gonna absorb that into budget, Matt, we'll, we'll crunch the numbers. Uh, that would not be required to be brought back before the board. I can actually.
Do like Mr. Hartman used to say, just go ahead and take care of it. At the end of the year, we'll make it right as we need. I've heard that so many times in my career.
Oh, the good old days.
Just go ahead and buy it and then at the end of the year, if you run short, we'll help you out.
That's the reason why we were at seventy-five percent.
Yes, amen.
What did you say? One, um, one last thing about stormwater, just so the board knows and the staff knows, um, you know, forever, the idea of the Craven Forty, uh, Craven West, Craven Thirty was.
West New Bern.
West, I'm sorry. Was the water was gonna go under seventy to a secondary stage and eventually wind up at Vacher's Creek, the logging canal. And I, I heard through grapevine, you know, that it'll be going a different way. Well, uh, when the zoning board approves these sections, the city clerk calls me and says, come out here and sign something. I typically am getting with the alderman for the given ward, as we did Alderman Best on one of your deals. And I think we did, none of us knew where, between a railroad trussel and the back of that thing and that twenty-five year pond where that water was gonna go. And so, but what I'm trying to say is, you know, it's a little late at that point to be trying to figure out some of these things when the board of aldermen are making million-dollar decisions and, and there's some big, big issues that we probably need to know, that I didn't even know formally that the policy had changed or whatever water was gonna wind up. Which I never liked it going out Vacher's Creek way anyway, but whoever's gonna maintain that canal, you know, if, if a tree landed in it or something. So again, these are the questions and why I'm asking if you have, um, policy changes you need that we're just informally, uh, not proving something until the engineer meets with the alderman in the given ward with me. So the alderman are just more so responsible for it, makes sign off on it than I am. That if that thing doesn't work, as in the case at your way, on one, and you've had some that are not very own. This board right here is concerned about this, uh, infrastructure, past, present and future. And, um, being, uh, you know, we, 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 we want the staff to stay up if, if there's a material failure, as was the case with the Bryce's Crossing and the, the type of material and the collars or whatever else and the applications for sealing them. And, and then the, the dynamic drainage system itself, when, when we're technically partnering with the HOA as how to get that water out.
Right.
And I don't wanna be partnering with HOA to get water out. So I want that water to run out there on the street and go out. And, but then again, it's gotta be, it's gotta be clean before it gets out.
So, so is it, so is it a good idea to still do some study or crunch some numbers in regards to what we have now for standards? And if we want to require them to be more, we take on the cost. Are we still gonna do that?
But, but why don't we do this? Mark made a good suggestion. Why don't we do a little bit of studying, see what that cost would be? Do a couple of design scenarios to where, hey, if we change it from a twenty-five year storm to a fifty year storm, what that would do to the pipe sizing? Would it change it from a twenty-four to a thirty or a twenty-four to a sixty? It's a big difference between a thirty and a sixty inch pipe. So let's do a couple of different case studies, kind of see what the difference would be and what the cost associated with that would be. And then we could probably report back to that another time.
That sounds good.
Well, I have to say that you and George and your staff, Avery, you have been very responsive to me and I appreciate it. I mean, I can pick up telephone and call, call, call and, and get a almost immediate response. And, you know, usually a, a good report back. So other than the fire department, I think you're doing an excellent job. Probably the number one department here, other than the fire department.
You're a number one fire department second. Be careful now, you got bad news. Well, he just said.
I hope you don't have a fire.
Number one, so, you know, he said Public Works is number one.
He knows what I mean.
Jer, Jer is asking about finance.
What do you mean?
Jer is asking about finance.
Yeah, no money, you have no department.
Get us our FEMA reimbursement and you will move you to.
Yeah, we'll move you on top of the fire department. How about that? Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Jordan.
Can I make a motion now during this meeting?
Motion on second is our discussion. Seeing none on further motion, say aye. All kinds of same motion is approved and the meeting is adjourned.